All right, I'm gonna call the July 22 planning board meeting to order. I ask for a motion to move approval of the July 8 minutes to the end of the meeting. All right, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to do, we're gonna go back to the hearing for 114 West Road. Regional impact notices went out. I think you have a copy of, there was a letter from the regional planning commission and school district. We did the site walk at 6 o'clock, so I think at this point applicant, it's, we're happy to hear your presentation of the proposed subdivision. I expected some part of that where we can address the version of the ordinance, which we have the letter from your attorney, and then we'll have some questions from the board. We'll open it to all members of the public. I'll also note for the record, Rich Marku is on through Zoom as well as some other members of the public, just one more member, so we have full seven at this moment. So I don't know if Sam's starting or, sorry?
Again, for the record, Eli Leno from New Hampshire. I didn't see the regional planning letter yet.
Here's an extra. I think there's, there were two there, but I had an extra one at my seat, so.
Thank you. All right, so for the record, Sam Foyezewicz, Meridian Land Services. I have Keith Anastasi to my right, as well as Eli, that are, Keith is the owner and the applicant of this application, and then actually Eli and Tim are Keith's legal counsel is related to this application. I'm sure we're all aware of what this property is and where it's located, but just to make sure that we're all clear, this property is located at 114 West Road. It's also identified as tax map 248 lot, lot eight, and then we are proposing 35 residential units in the form of single family and duplexes clustered together with two remaining parcels available for commercial development in the future. A little project history that I feel is important for the record, this application was before the planning board, it was in a conceptual form back in October of last year. We sought to kind of clarify some items mostly related to use density allocation, baseline density determination, and then bonuses, as well as architectural style, open, use of the open space, and then required studies. We then submitted for design review, which was heard in January with a follow-up meeting in February. We were before the board last month for a final subdivision review in June, and have, since, and we're here before you today for, I believe that totals five, this will be our fifth, and plenty more meetings. So with that, stated, the goal here tonight is really to get clear determination of what we were trying to establish at the very beginning of this process, which is establishment of baseline density, allocation of the, density allocation related to commercial and residential, use of the open space. When I have the plan up in front of you, you'll be able to see that we are, we kind of use some of that open space, or 50% open space a lot, for passive uses such as the access road to the pump house, the pump house with the associated well, and then some stormwater improvements, which we believe is allowed by the zoning, by the planning board, allowed to be in there by the planning board. Additionally, we talked about studies, we're aware of, we need the fiscal study, and then the traffic study, both of which are underway, and the, specifically the traffic study is, or traffic memo has been completed by GPI, is sitting in draft form, but I will issue it once we have clear directive from this board of what the actual uses are intended. That way it can be updated, and it's, updated in a correct form, submitted to the board once for review. And then a little sidebar here is, we will be seeking a DOT permit. DOT will review that traffic memo. If you're not aware, West Road is pretty much entirely under DOT jurisdiction, all the way from the interchange to, I think it's 132. So that whole road there is under DOT jurisdiction. With that, I'd like to turn it to Nicola to show the renderings of the site to kind of, while we were out there to see what it looked like, I think this is a good time to kind of steer the focus to the vision that we have for this project, and what we expect it to become, and how we think it would be a real good positive for the town of Canterbury, especially at that intersection where it does appear like it needs some life, given that gas station across the street, and we hope that this will give that intersection some life. I don't know if you can. So generally, if you don't mind going back real quick, this is the overview of the project. Obviously, we're here for, more for phase one, which is the residential component, and that's where you can see the residential clustered together in a cluster subdivision, and then the, that pad in the back reserved for the commercial area, and then there is that green pad which, in the front closest to West Road, reserved for the commercial area. This is just a better close-up view. We think that this is really a great neighborhood for, more specifically, the starter homes for trying to make it affordable. To make it affordable, you need to have higher densities, you need to have cluster densities to reduce infrastructure costs, and then this does give kind of a community vibe feel where you can walk to your neighbor's house and have a barbecue, your kid can ride, everyone knows each other, your kid can ride their bike around that loop road there, and we think it would be a very invited neighborhood. Just another kind of view, and this does kind of highlight what we were envisioning for being able to buffer that kind of main access road into the site with some form of landscaping. Out on the site walk, I stated how the architect got a little carried away with a stone wall, but I would envision that to be more of a berm with a fence on top of it, and a landscaped fence around it. Just a good representation to give you kind of scale of the project. So all these renderings were done based off of our Meridian site plan, that the architect then put the houses that they're envisioning on there, and really added some cars and some people for scale of the project. These are just some unique features of this project, which does allow for a more working-class type of person, someone that is starting out in their career, that may not be able to afford these ridiculous house prices that we're seeing here in New Hampshire. We give them an opportunity to, instead of renting, be a owner, pay a mortgage, and invest in their future. Furthermore, there are some natural forest buffers. Really, I made a statement to our team while we were kind of packing up here, this scale of development will probably have the least amount of trees I've ever cut down, mostly because of the development that has occurred before, but it literally will have the least amount of trees per unit that I've ever, that I've ever done, as well as that access road in the back will maintain most of that mature, those mature pines. A key point of this is the proximity to 93. It's obviously right off it. Some may see that as a negative in the project's mind with noise, but others may see that as a positive, where the majority of the traffic will be exiting town and going to Concord, probably to work, Concord for restaurants, and so on. So there would be minimal amount of traffic going to town unless the town is having some more of that, where you gotta go in and register your car, or pick your kid up at school, and so. Just a good aerial view of the property. Really, none of this, none of the proposed work is occurring in the forested areas. There are some trees scattered about on that front portion that will likely be removed during construction. If we can save any, we would be glad to, given that they are mature, and it's hard to replace a mature tree with young landscaping, but I can't commit to any of that now until we have a more definitive design and see what I can save through the process. So we'd like to kind of familiarize the board with, one, the development team here, some projects that they've done in the past to just, to represent that this isn't just slap it together, sell it, and move on. They do put together some nice products where this is a single-family home that Keith did, and as you can tell, it's, it's well done, well thought through by the architect, and well constructed. This is just another project of our scale, I believe Errol might have done this, this project, but it generally shows how, if you design it appropriately, you can create a nice, close-knit neighborhood with this type of scale of development. Just kind of moving through, Hutchinson Point, I drive by that probably every, every day. When it was being developed before, I was a member of Meridian. Errol did this one, and it really, really looked good, and is well constructed, and has become a nice, a nice feature in the town of Milford. Just another, really another example of how you can cluster units together and still make a, a nice product that the town could, could use.
Is that Winaswan?
What was that?
Is that Winaswan?
Was that the docks?
Stand down.
Awesome.
I think the, these are just some other projects that, they are large scale, but again, if they're well done, done by a good developer, they can be, do you have images of those, Well, this doesn't fit into that farm, farm style that the ordinance wants and the town wants, it's just an example of what could be done, how you can cluster them together and still have a viable project that people want to, want to live in, and they sell, and So, really, a conclusion to this portion of the presentation, we think that this is a, a great product for the town. It really does the town good, it will present well, and then hopefully with the commercial portions on later phases will be a good offset on the tax base, and the fiscal study will likely represent that. So kind of moving back towards the regulations, where this project started was, the applicants went before the town and they discussed what they should use this piece of property for. In doing so, they were told to kind of put their development goals on pause as the new master plan was being revised, it was updated to meet the current needs of the town of Canterbury, the 10-year current needs of the town of Canterbury, as well as revisions to the zoning ordinances. With that, in the current master plan, the land, in under land use, encouraging a mixed use of densities in appropriate parts of town. Continue to promote economic development in areas of town that are well-suited for business uses. Encourage the construction of housing for residents of all ages and income levels. Then under the housing section of it, support a mix of housing densities and types in Canterbury. Promote the use of cluster subdivisions and other zoning tools to increase the availability of housing. Encourage the development of additional residential units that are smaller and more affordable to accommodate downsizing seniors and young families. Then furthermore, there is, in the housing chapter, high priorities include previously noted support for cluster developments, support for mixed-use zoning in the vicinity of exits 17 and 18, to accommodate a mix of housing and small-scale retail slash office uses. I kind of specifically pulled those out of the master plan because I think this project perfectly represents what the master plan is trying to accomplish. It is, this project is trying to accomplish a different housing type that I believe that what Canterbury currently has in it with single families and duplexes. It also is clustering them together to give that neighborhood vibe. It allows for the, the construction costs to be low enough to allow for young families to be able to hopefully afford these, these structures.
Sam, any chance you could just move it back like three feet, so I think most of the public would be able to see it, and Josh should still be able to see it on that side.
Okay. So while we did just have a site walk, I, I don't believe much of the public was there that I see behind me, and if they are all for this project, I think it would be good to give an overview of what, what the project is. So generally, the project is a vacant field, with a tree line that, that circum, is circular around, around it.
So is this, the dark gray is the tree line?
The dark gray is actually the steep slopes by the town.
Oh, steep slopes, okay.
But the tree line is located here, as you move around. Generally, though, where there are steep slopes, there are trees, so that is a good representation of it. There are two flat portions of the property, one being in the front and one being in the rear, and then as you work to the middle, there is a low section that we all saw, that drops down roughly 10 to 20 feet. It is, it is bordered by a brook that is located well within the tree line, and then also 93 that I'm sure we all heard while we were out there. It has been described by several people that the way that this property is today was caused by New Hampshire DOT's construction of 93, where they over-excavated the center of the property, which created a wetland, which I know we all saw it out there today. If it was me, as a wetland scientist, I would not have flagged it that way, however, I'm not a wetland scientist, so they look at different functions and values, and that's where they classified that center portion as, as a wetland. It's a little unfortunate, however, a good use of that area in the upland, in the upland area in the center of it is the pump house and well, because that area has to be precluded from development anyways, so that's a good location for that pump house and well.
Can you just, can you show us where the wetland is?
So in this kind of dotted hatch here, there's kind of a meandering wetland, and then when we were standing over on the bank here, there was a radius of worship here, and that's where we're gonna place the, place the pump house in the upland area in the center of the wetland. That way the well radius is protected by the wetland and precluded from, from development. This section I probably actually should have presented before we started talking about existing conditions here, but we are, we're obviously here seeking for a major subdivision approval, a CUP for the cluster subdivision, a New Hampshire driveway permit, which we are hopeful to submit before the next planning board meeting and after this one, once we have some clear directive. New Hampshire DOT excavation permit, which is just really more about doing construction within the right of way. If you're gonna dig in the right of way and put utilities in the right of way, that's what that's for. A New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit, which is triggered by 100,000 square feet of disturbance, which we are triggering, we are gonna submit for. State subdivision approval for this, for the size of the lots being less than five acres. A standard dredge and fill permit for the wetland permit, which is only for the access road to the pump house. So we are going through a, we are purposely choosing the smallest portion of the wetland to put the access road through to where that pump house will go, so there'd be a very minor wetland impact to have access to that pump house. And then, at the time of construction, there will be several septic systems. Generally, they're either individual, for individual units, or will be shared amongst the duplexes. And then a public water supply permit. So as I stated earlier, the project consists of 35 single-family units with two commercial units, and then we are preserving over 50% of the area to go towards open space, and then with some of that area being the stormwater ponds that you probably, and the well, pump house, and well. We plan to phase this project into two to three phases, where the first phase being the residential portion, and the associated site improvements such as access road, stormwater improvements, and then the well. So say that again, phase one is what? Phase one will be the residential portion of the development, with the stormwater improvements associated with the access into the site, and we'll stop, stop just after we get past, back up onto that knoll that we kind of walked through that kind of wooded tunnel there. And phase two would be? Phase two, and I'll call it 2A and 2B depending on what goes first, will either be the commercial out front or the commercial in the back, depend, and that'll be market-driven, at which point in time we would expect them to be back before you for essentially a site plan approval for them to design a site. We have some examples of what could go there, where upfront, we showed that, while very unlikely, and maybe in 20 or 50 years, a Starbucks could fit on that parcel, and more likely to be some form of retail or office space out front, could go up front there. And then we also showed that you could fit a self-storage facility in the back there, which, I might as well put the plan up here so I can picture where that's working. So when it comes to utilities, we're obviously gonna be serving the residential portion with a well, with the public water supply well, and we expect that the front commercial portion would also need to be served by the public water supply well, based off of, you couldn't fit a individual well in that front area there. And then the remainder, the, the back lot, could have the option of connecting to that public water supply well, or, which would probably make more economic sense is drilling its own well at that time when they're under construction, because running that water line all the way from that pump house will either go a long distance to not disturb the wetlands, or would have to go right through the wetlands, so it'd be probably more cost-appropriate if they drill their own well. However, we don't know that at this time, because that's all kind of hypothetical potential. Moving on, each individual unit will be served by a septic system, and then there obviously will be power run into the site, which I think in the West Road, there is three-phase power available. Fire, we still need to do some coordination with the fire department to see if the pump house is appropriate for a fire protection, and if we could put some fire hydrants there, if that would be adequate, or if we need to do fire assisters. At worst-case scenario, we'd have to put a fire system in. We've already touched on wetland impacts, and then when we move to stormwater, this site will be designed to the town's stormwater regulations, and more importantly, will be designed to the state's stormwater regulations. Sam, could we go back to fire protection? Yes. Is it your intent, then, to put residential stripers in? No, based off of the cost of them, it's, I think your guy said 15 to 18 grand per, per unit to put them in, it would probably be more cost-appropriate to put a fire system in. Would you respectfully disagree with that? I, I, that's outside of my knowledge. So, access and traffic, like I said before, once we have clear directive, we will provide the town with the traffic memo that GPI has produced. After it needs to be modified, they'll modify it beforehand. The access will be governed by New Hampshire DOT, and we will be seeking an access permit from them. What about the fiscal study? What is that? What did Mark say?
He said, I think six weeks from, two weeks from, by another month.
I apologize for the delay on that, so, I recognize that I thought that I'd have it today, or before this meeting, but Mark was busier than I thought he would be. So with that is the end of my presentation, unless you would like me to go into further detail on something else, but we'd be happy to hear what the board has to say, unless, Eli, do you have anything that you would like to add?
No, I think that was great, Sam, and we're of course happy to answer questions.
Yeah, so, basically, I think the two big things that it makes sense to address before we get into the details of, you know, proposed units, locations, all of the services for them, is the version of the ordinance and the baseline density calculation, understanding that there's flexibility on bonus decks that may come later. So if we start with those two, Eli, did you want to address the ordinance version first?
Again, the board was familiar with my letter last meeting, I don't think it helps any of us for me to reread those pieces, but based on our preliminary discussions, I believe we were told by the fact that we have come in within 12 months of having our preliminary plan review, so I believe we're under the previous version of the ordinance, but certainly we'll, I'll hand the chair out, want to hear your thoughts on the matter today.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll read the section of the RSA that you cite, and then maybe the board can have some discussion. So RSA 67612, it's paragraph six, and starting with B was the second sentence, "No proposed subdivision or site plan review or zoning ordinance or amendment shall affect a plat or application which has been the subject of notice by the planning board pursuant to RSA 676:4 Roman 1 (d), so long as the plat or application was subject of notice prior to the first legal notice of the change or amendment. The provisions of this paragraph shall also apply to proposals submitted to a planning board for design review pursuant to RSA 676:4 Roman 2 (b), provided that a formal application is filed with the planning board within 12 months of the end of the design review process." Turning to RSA 676:4 Roman 2, there's Roman, or sorry, little a, which is preliminary conceptual consultation, which does not have notice to a butters, and there is little b, so Roman 2b, design review phase, which is, occurs after notice to a butters, and in this case, the applicant did both preliminary conceptual consultation and design review, and I did confirm with Callan Michelle that that was noticed design review. So that any, all right, I guess I'll keep going for a brief minute. I did also check for what's worth, I think that ordinance is pretty clear, but the legislative history on that amendment was pretty clear. The purpose is, if, if you're gonna have meaningful design review, you can't create a race situation where the town has this opportunity to change the ordinance after an applicant has paid notice to butters and come in for design review. If they come in for just preliminary conceptual where it's not noticed, you don't have that protection, and there can be an in-ordinance change, but here it was, was the latter. So it, open to any discussion from the board, but the, a letter from attorney, I apologize, what's your last name?
Leno.
All right, Attorney Leno.
Not a defense attorney.
That makes sense to me, you know, based on my reading, but happy to hear everyone else's thoughts on the ordinance.
Can you clarify the part about the first notice? The first notice of the change in the ordinance?
No proposed subdivision or site plan, so it's, so long as the application was subject of notice prior to the first legal notice of the change or amendment.
Right, so that's the question, when was the legal notice, first legal notice, and is that the first thing, legal notice?
Good clarification.
Before or after the design review?
February 12, 2025 was what?
That's when it was closed. The first legal notice for, I believe, was January 3, if I'm counting 10 days prior to the January planning board meeting.
But for which?
For the design review.
Right, so then.
So that's what we've.
Miss McKay said hers was in February, so in terms of the sort of race.
So, January 3 was design review notice?
Yeah.
And with, what date in February?
From our communications, it was on February 12, 23.
February 12 was first notice of the changes to the ordinance. Good catch, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on that point? So it seems clear to me, we're working with the version of the ordinance that was in effect on January 3rd when they had the notice for a design review. All right, so the second sort of big outstanding question that we got to address is the baseline density calculation. And so we all have the, I think it was document number seven that's listed on the town website for that. It's the cluster density calculation. You can walk through that with us first and we can have a discussion.
What is document number seven referencing?
Is there a date on that letter?
Sorry, the June 3rd, 2024 cluster density calculation baseline density determination? I think it was.
I have a similar.
Sorry, your footnote had document seven, so that's how I was distinguishing between all the different application materials.
June 3rd. Yeah, this is the same one, but it's from November, November 19th. I submitted that just as kind of the package of the application. So in determining base, baseline density determination, section 5.2, or sorry, 6.4.0c of the Canterbury zoning ordinance is specifically referenced, which is, "The density or maximum number of residential dwelling units permitted in a cluster neighborhood may not exceed the density allowed under section 5.2 of the zoning ordinance, except when a request for density incentive is approved by the planning board under section 6.6 or 6.7." So then when you move back to section 5.2, minimum lot size standards, which is 5.2.0a, and I would say specifically one because that's the one that mostly relates to area requirements, which is, "In computing the minimum lot acreage requirements under this article, any portion of the lot not suitable for building due to high water table, as evidenced by open water or wetlands, shall not be included. Open water or wetland that has been dredged, drained, or filled shall not be included in computing the minimum lot sizes." Which the minimum lot size for this area is one acre. So I read that as you take the gross acreage minus the wetland area divided by one gives you the baseline density.
All right. Board discussion on this piece, I think it makes sense to go through that before we get to anything else.
So roads, the roads are not exempted from that one acre, acre.
So as, as I read 5.2a, it's, you know, the starting point is gross area minus open water or wetland. Or if there was any other evidence of high water table, something to that effect. Actually, maybe to help us out, Sam, can you point to which of these plans has the total acreage and the total wetland calculation from the wetland scientist?
We originally submitted that, which. Which the gross, and I'm more familiar with my earlier applications, but the gross acreage was 37.26 acres. The wetland area was 5.09 acres. And then the net tract area is 32.17 acres.
So wait, I back up. So I see, if I'm looking at the existing conditions plan, I see the certified wetland scientist stamp from Spencer Tate. Where's the total wetland area?
Probably don't have it on the existing conditions. Which map are you referring to?
I was looking at existing conditions. I see the stamp. I don't see the calculation, but there's plenty of plans, so I just want to make sure we can see the calculation.
The existing conditions plan isn't on that. I know it was submitted with the original design review. I'd be happy to resubmit the plan with that calculation.
So you're saying, so it's 5.09.
Do you subtract out steep slopes?
I do not.
Because?
Because of the strict, the strict reading of that section. And, and this is where I think there is some confusion here of it, this section essentially defines portions of the lot, lot not suitable for building. And then it says, "Due to high water table or evidence of open water." So I'm, I'm going to a section that allows me to establish, I'm going from a section that says how to establish density that points me in this direction here on how to establish the density.
And we consider this in terms of the canons of construction, in terms of reading a piece of legislation which have been held by our Supreme Court to zoning ordinances as well. We can't add words that the legislature, in this case, the, okay, it's planning board and town as adopting this at town meeting, didn't see fit to include. But the other piece here is that there are sections of your ordinance that do exclude steep slopes. So we can look at that and assume that based on canons of construction again, that if they had wanted to include them here, they would have. So we won't read those in because they're not listed.
Can you help me out? Because your, your letter refers to section 16, but can you point us to exactly where in that workforce housing ordinance was the reference to steep slopes? So we're all on the same page?
Yeah.
Is it, is it D2? Is it anywhere else? So 16.4, D2? I think page 81 is, I see at least a reference. I just want to make sure I'm not missing any additional with that.
I believe in my article 16. I reviewed from like six months ago. That was the, the only spot where I could find steep slopes specifically within the zoning ordinance.
So we're all on the same page. So article 16 titled workforce housing ordinance. When you get to section D on page 81, D2 says, "Under conditional use permit, there is a yield plan depicting the approximate development potential of the parcel." There's a table, but deducting for wetlands, steep slopes, septic wells, 25% for roads when needed, and any other non-buildable variable as indicated in the zoning ordinance or site plan or subdivision regulations as appropriate.
You're not claiming in any way that this is workforce housing?
No. So it's, yeah, it's not a workforce housing conditional use permit. And so if I understand it right, they're saying?
The reason I ask is to, to the extent that there's any benefit anywhere else.
Right. So that line is clear about what gets deducted and where am I at here? I lost my other page, cluster bill, so there's an article six.
Were you able to find out? I see the stamp of the, of the wetland scientist as well, but where the number 5.07? So I can provide a exhibit for the next planning board meeting if that will appease the word for that, so that way it's.
If it's not on this, on the existing conditions?
It won't be on the existing conditions.
Your question, have we historically applied steep slopes?
I don't think there's been an application under this, which is part of why design review sort of peered out is we didn't have anything that we could refer to and discuss. So this is sort of issue of first impression for the planning board. The other piece, just so we all have it on page 35 under, under cluster neighborhoods, 6.4, I. Steep slopes are referenced in terms of the, the 50% total land area as designated open space, but not in the section on density.
Which letter is that?
6.4I on page, bottom of page 35.
Is that the portion that the developer's plan doesn't apply because it was after an act?
Oh, that's, I honestly, I.
I think you're correct.
Okay.
I have the old version.
Yeah, okay.
Which section do you want that?
What does, what does I look like if it exists?
This is 6.5?
Six, 6.4.
4. I, I can read it into the record if you're.
That would be helpful. We can circulate a copy of the old ordinance after for the next one.
So 6.4I, 50% of the total area of the parcel shall remain undisturbed as designated open space, except for activities and improvements approved by the planning board after consultation with the conservation commission. The following restrictions shall apply to the designated open space. There, there shall be no further subdivision of, or development of the designated open space areas which shall be preserved in perpetuity as undisturbed areas using only, used only for uses approved by the planning board. The designate, two, the designated open space shall be currently deeded to an owners association which shall be responsible for taxes, maintenance, compliance with article 6.4.0i.1 of this ordinance and the cost of the conservation monitoring as specified by the town. Three, legal instruments which preserve the open space.
You're reading the current one, aren't you?
I'm reading the past one.
This is the revised 0409, 2024, I believe, right? Is that what yours has at the top?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, let's see here, where was I? I'll say three. Three, legal instruments which preserve the designated open space in perpetuity, including the language of the deed restrictions applicable, shall be submitted to the planning board for approval. The planning board may refer these instruments or restrictions to town council for review. Four, the planning board shall require a program for future monitoring of easements and permit, permit conditions affecting the designated open space and the section.
Okay, so that, that five, that's in our current ordinance was added and that's not there for purposes of this application.
My question, the road and pump house, is that being built in open space?
That is, and that's where we would need planning board approval and consultation with the conservation commission to, well, for that as well as the stormwater improvements.
Is there an alternative?
That, that honestly is the best location for it. The alternative is decreasing some of the other development areas such as that commercial portion in the back to a smaller size to offset that area associated with that pump house.
So which of the plans shows the, at least for the current application, the total open space calculation?
The, the subdivision plan that will show it has not been created yet because we need to have these conversations.
So at least based on this, what, what is the current open space? Or no, well, yeah, you can show it too, it would be helpful, but the total amount too.
It's essentially right at 50%, including all those. So where you see this.
Just for the record, can you tell us which, which plan you're reading?
So 01 sheet seven. Where's the sheet five? So generally, where you see this gold dash line, and here is developed area, and here is developed area, and here is developed area, and then this access road.
So everything outside of that large dashed, those two areas with the large dash lines.
With the exception of this access, this access road.
And are you including those little triangle up at the south?
Right here, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that contiguous?
I don't believe that's a requirement. I think that was a conversation that we had or a topic that was brought up.
Yeah, and that, that piece too, I think the.
What's the, the area, the southernmost area that's going to be developed as commercial? In the event that a commercial developer says, you know, I need 10 more feet and, you know, for whatever, you know, or for 50 or 100. Given that you're right at 50%, I mean, I don't have the square feet calculations, but assuming that there's not much room for error there in the event that a commercial developer needs a little bit more.
That's an interesting question. So I don't know if they would have the right to come in and ask the board for that, come in and ask the ZBA for a variance from the ordinance, but I would assume that it's similar to, this is my property, right? This is the lot that I'm working with and you can't go onto your neighbor's property without there being some form of lot line adjustment for that. So I would, I would think that you can't do that unless you're receiving a variance from the ZBA to reduce the open space requirement.
So Josh, to get it on 6.4I, D3, she talks about legal instruments preserving the designated open space of this gets through here, whatever the open space is that's on that plan, they're sort of stuck with that and, you know.
That's good.
It's on the, on the unit owners to fit whatever they're going to do and then.
Yeah.
Their little areas without getting into that open space.
Did you have a technical show over?
A lot of.
So I guess there were eight members of the planning board?
That one's not a lot to get.
All right. So backing up and maybe before we get into the rest. Any thoughts on the gross area minus the 5.09 wetland area, leaving 32.17 area for initial baseline calculation?
Clarification.
Yeah.
Are the commercial areas part of that gross area or not?
They are. The, the entire portion of the property is started with the total property area and then reduced down with the wetland area.
So I think at, at least on the, the current plan, it would be the two commercial areas are units one and two.
Yeah, so those are part of our 32.
The duplexes count as two units and then the single family count as one unit. That's how they're, they're going here.
All right, so our commercial entities count as a unit?
Yes.
For the purposes of calculation.
And you have eight buildings there. I mean, at least proposed or pictured.
It is one, one ownership. That's one, that's one unit.
Yeah. And that may be something that maybe we have to talk about too is, is what types of uses that second commercial lot is, is used for, because they're talking about self-storage, but.
How much space is occupied by that large commercial section? Because we're talking about a calculation that's based on minimum lot size of an acre, but that commercial section is taking up more than an acre.
Yeah, well, that's the, I think that's the point of the cluster. None of these are going to have an acre. It's, you're figuring out how many units you can have and then you try to cluster them somewhere and take a bunch of the property out so that.
Yeah.
On average.
I understand that.
I understand that. I'm, I'm talking about.
But I, I don't know which plan shows the acreage of that unit.
Well, I'm just, like, if the whole thing is 35 or so, then that, that large commercial block has to be more than a single acre.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's approximately five. Yeah, the, the total building square footage is roughly around 60,000 square feet in this, in that plan, but that's, this is all conceptual at that point.
So you're calling one unit, on the south side, that's one unit, commercial. So, so you're calling one unit, um, on, on the south side, that's one unit commercial, and then unit two commercial is on the road, and those are, that's, is that how you're counting it?
Yes.
Just keep us focused, before, before we get there.
I may be way off topic.
No, no, I don't think that's off topic, I think the, the starting point is where we need to figure out total number of units and then discuss what they're doing with the units, I'm just talking about the.
Sure.
The calculation, um, so the, we have something we're working with to sort of move to the next step. And their calculation is thirty seven subtract the wetland.
Minus five point oh nine.
Leaves you with thirty two, which is thirty two units, and then there's bone density that they want, and we'll get to that at some point, whether or not to do that, but, um, does that make sense to everyone on the board? That at least as the ordinance is written, that thirty two point one seven is the acreage that we're using to find the baseline density of one acre units that they're allowed.
So that, that is not how one would do, if, if you were an engineer and you had that property and say, okay, I'm going to put in thirty five separate houses and to do, to divide it up under our ordinance, it's not a simple mathematical problem, it's a layout problem and figuring how it all works. And we would have, so we have a town engineer who will be reviewing this, I believe, we have a third party review. I expect, and I would think we'd ask our town engineer to show us how to lay out this plat so that it had thirty five units, to show us what the baseline is, show us what the legal layout you can do to get the mass number of units of the type you want, that's how I would approach it.
You mean, if I understand you right, um, you would want to lay it out with a conventional way and make sure you get thirty.
Yeah.
Two units and, or thirty two units, and if not.
I think that's what the ordinance says, the ordinance says that the number would be the same as if you did it without the cluster.
If I could respond to that again in other, please pay, excuse me, in other places in your ordinance, there are calls for a yield plan, there's not in this section, which is exactly what you're saying, where you draw the vanilla boxes, if it's one acre zone, you draw your one acre and then you subtract roads, et cetera, to get them to a compliance subdivision, but that's nowhere in this cluster.
Oh, it doesn't say a yield plan, but it says as the same as if it was done without the cluster. That's a yield plan, what it says in the ordinance is your yield plan.
But again, other places distinctly call out a yield plan.
Well, this distinctly calls out to follow the ordinance.
I hope. Can we locate section five point two in the ordinance?
Is page twenty, or at least page twenty of the current? I think. Yeah, nineteen to twenty.
Yes.
Sing the needle.
Okay, so the density may not exceed the density allowed under section five point two, except for the incentives, right?
Mm-hmm.
And in five point two. If I point to computing minimum lot depth and width, each lot must contain within its bounds a rectangle meeting these requirements, each side is a parallel from a boundary that traditional way we do it.
But that's only for a compliant subdivision lot.
Well, but six point four references five point two, so I think five point two applies.
You don't think it would be A four that's more on point though?
Which section A four?
Um, five point two.
Basically, it makes the duplex would be one point seven five on a normal subdivision. Or is it one point five or one point seven times point seven five, so it'd be one point five for a normal subdivision duplex.
So you haven't done a five point two.
No, they, they would.
Analysis of this.
Yeah, I think i- if that applied, if A four applied, I think they'd be entitled to more units based on duplex. They're, they're looking at, if I'm understanding right, and correct me if I'm wrong, just A one and interpreting density to mean area.
Right.
And they're looking just at the one that deals with normal area and applying that to the cluster subdivision, and not looking at the other three, including, you've got the one on rectangle, which again, I think would be harmful to their total number, and four of, uh, a lower density for two family, which would be helpful to their proposal, so some, some help, some hurt, but they're ignoring two, three, and four, and looking just at density.
And again, with all due respect to the board, these are the questions we've been trying to raise for almost a year now, because it's just not an easy to follow piece, and I understand that you haven't had this particular application of your ordinance before, so we're all sort of in the same boat on this one.
Yeah, and, and maybe I just have it in the wrong spot, wasn't, I thought when I looked at all your application materials, there was a plan that just showed lots with building envelopes to show that conceptually you could fit this many, like thirty five lots, is that, is that a plan that was here?
Yes, you are correct, as part of the CUP process, there is a plan that says to reasonably demonstrate that you can do this, and I believe that came up with twenty four, and then when you add in the ADUs that are allocated to each single family lot, you're upwards in the forties, forty eight. And since these are condos, they won't have ADUs, so we're still, we're still floating around that. We're still on the low side of whichever way you wanna.
That, and. I don't remember where that point was, right?
It was, it was a, it was a separate exhibit.
Separate exhibit, and it had twenty four sort of distinct lots, sort of hypothetical showing how the envelopes would be.
And it's a plan that makes no sense, given what we're trying to accomplish here.
I don't think you can apply four because you're not building proposed two family or multifamily uses, you're proposing a condominium cluster.
They are two, so there are a lot of two families in here.
I understand that, but it's a.
Agreed, and, and I don't, I don't think they are, just to be clear on their plan, they're not.
I, I understand, so four is irrelevant to us, and I think, but I think one, two, and three are, one, you, I think you complied with. But I'm, I, I, I just haven't been convinced yet that two and three don't apply, and if two applies to the comments that Greg made, uh, the counting would be, I, I don't know if it's more or less, but it would just be done differently, you, you'd have to just block it out.
And that is the nature of the plan Sam was discussing, that original sort of vanilla box.
So that's our question, that's, that's what we've gotta figure out.
Right, well, how do we answer that, and do we get our lawyer to do that, like, who answers this question?
It's, I don't think, I mean, it's, it's our ordinance, this is the first application, so that's the, that's what we sort of have to grapple with. I, I at least, when I'm, you know, when you're reading cluster subdivision together with regular minimum lot standards, it makes sense to me that you're just looking at the acreage for density and not, because we're not, it's not a subdivision in the sense that you're putting a buildable envelope on a, you know, this much frontage, this, this parallel block, and.
And, yeah, they're not true.
And then there's, and that's why they're then squeezing them in.
I disagree, I mean, but they are. It is a subdivision.
Well, I understand that, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, to really, I'm, that's, you know, my view, but I'm, that's the discussion I'm hoping we can continue having.
Uh.
Yeah.
I think we just try to figure out what it means and follow what it says, is what I, I would approach it.
Yeah, Scott and Megan, any sort of initial thoughts on, on how to interpret those two pieces together and how we're, we're figuring out?
So in looking through their letter, the calculations in the ordinance, I, I'm in agreement with their calculations. To me, they make sense, and I, I do think that, um, if we go down a different road, it may be more, more units, more development there.
I, I don't know if that's true, but, you know, it's pretty specific, in computing minimum lot depth, you know, minimum lot size standards, in computing minimum lot depth and width, each lot must contain within its bounds a rectangle meeting the requirements, the size, parallel, and all that, and, um, and, and, and you, you do that blocking, like Greg is saying, and then you, and you, you know, squeeze them in there best you can, and how many do you have? And that, I, I don't know if it's more or fewer than thirty two, but it, um, I, I don't think you can sort of just ignore it.
So Sam, the original concept plan there for the straight subdivision? I think that meets more of the circle, just discuss it, right?
Yeah, so that was a, um, where we did run a road through it, um, and did meet the minimum frontages and the minimum depths and the minimum areas, um, and that comes up with, let me pull it up here.
This is something you showed us at one of the, um.
It is not, it really, because our density determination is going to that section because our interpretation has always been this section most appropriately represents how they calculate density against experience in many other towns, where you go based off of the area calculation. So that, that plan was never presented to this board, no.
Uh, Michelle's going out to get the flag from last year because she thinks that something like this might have been.
Maybe that was, maybe I was looking at one of the prior ones, not.
Yeah.
Not this one, okay.
No, it was submitted for the, on the June third meeting.
Yeah, so she's gonna go up and look for it, and I hope it still applies.
All right.
Does exist.
Yeah, I.
Do you wanna just show them what's on your screen here, just for.
Are you looking at the conventional one hundred?
So maybe we, we did provide this as an exhibit.
I've seen that one.
And here, and obviously this doesn't make sense, no, no one wants this.
Right.
It's got wetland impacts, there's, there's challenges to it.
How many, I mean.
That comes up with twenty four, and then when you apply ADUs to it, which I believe, I'm not sure what the most recent RSA has come out with, um, you're at forty eight dwelling units.
You haven't taken out a wetland.
Yeah, I don't feel like the ADUs are relevant.
And some, some of those were, uh.
In the.
How many of those were above one and a half acre, for example, I just, in the sense that how many of them would have been.
A lot, a lot of them are, because if they, because I did subtract the wetlands out of, out of those lot acreages. So, and yes, it, yes, roads go through wetlands, right, but it's a wetland permit that we could receive, it'd be challengeful, it would be expensive, but they're challenging and it would be expensive, and it makes.
But possible.
It, it, legal, uh, but it doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense, so that's where, again, in interpreting the, um, interpreting the master plan with a housing crisis, this seems like a good, a good development, and it fits into the regulations as best as we feel we can fit it, given the ambiguity in which specifically which section to fall under.
How do you, where do you find the double, double, double implication for ADUs, where, where does?
A, a single family a lot is allowed by right to have a ADU, and the state just passed a law that allows it to be detached as well as.
What are you saying, you could put an ADU on it?
I was good with him, he had shown it to us.
And you think the ADU law that requires the allowance of ADUs, um, affects the minimum lot size standards in our court?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying.
No, he's saying you could have more units because you're gonna need to do on each of those.
I'm saying that if this was built, the town could theoretically have forty eight units, just dwelling units.
Well.
I don't know that that's relevant, so.
No, that's. Dwelling unit and ADU.
No, because they're not subdivisible, those units aren't subdividable, ADUs are not subdivisible.
We, we, we had some conversations in the early planning meetings, and I can't remember if it's a conventional or conceptual or a design review, but there was discussion about, are we gonna allow for ADUs? And the board was already getting into this discussion of, are we gonna try and double our units in our condos, in, in our condo dwelling units? And we said no, so we're not trying to, we're basically.
It's not allowed.
So.
So that would, the, the plan you showed us on the computer, that's not a condo development?
That would be a straight, straight and.
No, so.
Housing development.
Yeah, and this is where I, I kind of get stuck, if I look at six point four, it talks about the density, the maximum number of residential units, and then it refers to section five point two, and it uses the word density, and then five point two A is minimum lot size standards, the word density is not actually there, and then we have two, one for minimum lot acreage and one for minimum lot depth and width. To me, it makes sense that density is referring to sort of the acreage, the total amount, and then you're squeezing it, not that you would have to basically show an entire regular subdivision to then show a cluster subdivision to move them around, and that's the, the question that we've, sorry, gotta figure out.
I mean, your, your reading of this is consistent with my understanding of it when we were writing this, for what that's worth.
Right.
I don't, I, I think in some cases, it's probably an unreasonable expectation of people to develop a theoretical tentative traditional subdivision plan only to not use it, that seems functionally silly.
Um, Rich, if, if you're able, do you, because I wanted to sort of get everyone to at least weigh in a little bit, and I haven't heard from you or Megan yet. Do you have any thoughts on how we're looking at five point two A in conjunction with six point four C? And you are on mute to the extent.
No, I don't have my zoning ordinance with me. But I tend to think at the way Greg is in terms of looking at the, the units, the whole units first. That make sense?
Yeah, and Megan, you have initial thought? So it may be that we're just gonna have to, if there's sort of two ways to read this, we're gonna have to vote and take a, here's how we interpret it, and then either they have to come back with something else, or.
It's tough, because I see, you both, um, I do think that the ADU argument is irrelevant, irrelevant unless you're building ADUs onto those, that's really, not everybody wants an ADU, um, so there's potential, but that's not actual, um. I'm, I'm probably gonna agree with Scott and Brendan on this one.
I have another question.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
In the, in the, um, plan you showed us on your computer, um, does it comply with the, I, I understand it complies with five point two A one, you know, with the, with the wetlands and so forth, does it comply with the minimum lot depth and width, that weird lines we have to draw?
A hundred percent on the width, because I interpreted width as frontage, although, because typically a zoning ordinance, that's how it refers to width, the depth is, um, generally complied with, but, um, as you probably are aware of any lot here in town, nothing is a perfect rectangle, so like, some of them are triangle or some of them are, um, swish, swish down, yeah.
But I mean, you have to draw that, you have to draw that, that rectangle within the lot.
Well, that's where like it, it comes down to a triangle or point.
Are you able to draw the appropriate rectangle within each of those lots as depicted on your.
You're saying maintain, you're saying maintain the width, the entire length of the depth.
No, so, uh, if you look, if you look up above at the start of five point two, and I think for commercial, it's, right, one acre is the minimum lot acreage, but then depth and width is one fifty feet by two hundred, so it's just, is there a hundred and fifty by two hundred rectangle with, right, right angles?
No, not all, not all of them comply with the width all the way to the depth, no.
Not, not width all the way to the depth, is, it's, the question is, right, if, if you have like a weird triangle, you can put a rectangle in a triangle, the question is for each of those, can you put that hundred and fifty foot by two hundred foot rectangle each of those?
So you don't really get twenty four, you get something less than that, if you were gonna, if you're gonna make a traditional subdivision and comply with the rectangle stuff, it would be something less than twenty four, right, right?
Yeah. All right.
And sure, I'd like to, I have my agreement, I do have some questions about the open space calculations, if you wanna, I don't wanna like.
Yeah, well, it may be, I think.
If we wanna move.
I think the, the, right now, the way I see it is, we, we figure out what the, sort of the baseline acreage and the baseline lots, and then the question of whether. And then the question of whether or not their cluster complies with having sufficient open space can sort of come after. Because if we, if, and as they say, if the answer is you have to have some amount fewer, they would presumably come back with another plan that has open space.
They're like connected, so they know.
Right.
Old dude, definitely.
Yes. So I guess what I'd suggest is any, any further comments, more put any further discussion on interpreting those two pieces, but then we take a vote basically on how to interpret that. So they have something that, something that we're applying to this application.
I think at the risk of throwing a bit of a wrench in all of this, like my, my question here is if we're designating this rather large chunk as commercial, can we still count this as part of the acreage for determining how many house lots we can put here? I don't know if that's supported by the ordinance, it's just like thinking, you know, kind of the spirit of the law here, I'm like.
Yeah. I see these as, as great questions and how to handle the duplex and all that, but that's sort of after we figure out our units. It's what can they do with their units and does this plan comply?
Alright.
So for step one is how do we, what's the language of the ordinance, how we're applying it? And then step two is we actually look at their plan and see if there's enough open space, see if the layout's right, see if the commercial units work, if that makes sense?
Sure.
Alright. Any, any other thoughts on six point four and five point two? Scott, say.
I think we have to, I think it has to comply with the, the rectangle thing in each of the lots that, that, that would be proposed if this were a traditional subdivision. And that the rectangle in five point two A two has to be complied with essentially.
Okay.
What Greg said, I think.
So, yeah, I think maybe I'll just sum up what I think the two positions are if Greg and Josh jump in if I got it right. So we've got six point four A C, which says the density or maximum number of residential dwelling units permitted in a cluster neighborhood may not exceed the density allowed under section five point two of the zoning ordinance, and then ignoring incentives for now. And so the two sort of ways that we have discussed interpreting that is one, density refers to under five point two A one. We look at the minimum lot acreage, subtract the, the wetlands, and you're just dividing it. And version two is you look at five point two A one and two, and you have, and three, and you have to basically have a plan that shows that number of lots with meeting all of the dimensional requirements, both acreage and depth and width. That's your baseline, and so those are the two versions. Does that make sense? Everyone on the same page?
Yeah, I think that's what the ordinance says, sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Can I just, if, if one through three are included, why if we have a proposal with duplexes can four not be included then? I don't know how that makes sense to exclude one of these subs if you.
I mean.
Because this isn't a two-family or multifamily use, this is a cluster development, it's different.
Well, right, but it's not a cluster development if our hypothetical is putting in a straight subdivision. So we still have hypothetical duplexes in our straight subdivision then.
I would, I would agree with you if we, I think the ordinance says you have to apply all of five point two.
One to four versus one to determine density.
And that would include what you're talking about there, right?
And you might get a seven, you might get a twenty-five percent if they're all duplexes.
Right.
At which point you're back to about that thirty-two number, give or take. Just saying, this may be a wash if we're gonna count all of them.
Let's call it a wash.
I mean, for me, it's not about the number, it's about following what it's, what the ordinance says.
That's a lovely idea from a speed perspective.
Agreed, and I think, so that's, that's where I think there's, there's two interpretations that we've discussed, and it makes sense where there are seven of us, so hopefully no tie votes. We can make a decision as the board is how do, how do we interpret five point two A when it's being read in as the density requirement under six point four C? And we'll care if I just do roll call and I'll have it go through, and you can say whether it's, is it five point two A one we're referring to acreage is what we're looking at for density? Or whether it's one through four and all of those have to be included when we're determining density as that word is, appears in six point four? So I'll just.
Brendan?
Yeah?
Sorry, may I throw one more wrench in that?
You can definitely, again. We're, we're the board, they got stuck with the first interpretation, so.
And because we're probably setting some precedent here, I think we, it.
You're really not, because you have a new zoning ordinance that will apply to anything future, so this is.
This is valid, but maybe you're wrong.
But it is a key legal issue in case there's an appeal and any direction.
Yeah.
So, well, and this may be a role of that. If we're thinking about like what's the worst case scenario of each of these interpretations? It seems like kind of the, the worst case scenario would be like a, like a, a total area that is perhaps very long and thin, that's unusually strangely shaped such that you couldn't get very many conforming lots out of it. Then you would have a situation where conforming lots would give you a much smaller number of allowable units versus the strict acreage calculation. Does that make sense?
Is the question you're asking if the, if the lot were so shaped that you couldn't get the
Let's say it's very long and thin, we can only get, I don't know, five conforming lots out of it or something, for whatever reason. Like, that's the situation in which the number would be very, very different.
Might be different, yes, that's right.
And that's kind of, like, that's almost like the real concern is what happens in that situation.
I think you still have to apply the ordinance.
Well, sure, but clearly we have a disagreement about how we apply the ordinance, and therefore we are left in the realm of interpretation, which nobody likes.
I like clear numbers.
And I mean, from a clear numbers perspective, like doing a straight acreage calculation is certainly much simpler.
Yeah.
Alright.
Just throwing that out there.
Oh, yeah, I disagree. So I, I guess what I'm gonna do is I'm, I'm just gonna do a roll call so we get it all, so. We'll try to find a way we can actually do version one. Is density refer just to the acreage requirements? Or does density refer to acreage, lot, depth and width as a way of describing? I'm gonna start, go left or right, and then loop in Greg at the end, so Scott?
Acreage, hold on.
Alright, Megan?
Acreage only.
Greg?
I think we should follow all the provisions of five point two as it says in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll call it acreage, depth and width. I think it is, the word density refers just to lot acreage. Logan?
Acreage.
Josh?
All four of them.
And Rich?
Depth and width.
So like with that, the decision here for this is we're looking at density based on the acreage. After that, the next question, which we've touched on a bunch, is, you know, what is a unit? And open space and how that fits in? So how, how are we looking at open space? How are we looking at units and the division between residential and commercial? I think it makes sense to talk about that before we talk about anything like density bonus, if that makes sense, but open to other suggestions. Alright.
I have to, I think we should address third-party review at some point tonight because it takes time, and we don't wanna hold the, hold it so.
Sorry, just making my list. So what we gotta figure out is units, open space calc, third-party review. Alright. To me, it kind of makes sense to still talk about units and open space calc first for third-party because if, if we're saying, right, for example, that this corner can't be included and some other things, that they need to come back with a different plan, and then review would be of that more concrete plan. So anyway, in terms of calculating open space, I think the questions that I heard, and jump in if you have any others, is does it need to be contiguous? So we had that question about sort of the corner. Does this long access road that goes to the commercial lot in the south, can that be part of the open space or not? Does the
Well access.
Well access, that like small road to access the pump? Does that count as part of the open space? Are there any others?
That says undisturbed, undisturbed, so that would be the infiltration cost. And, or anything that's disturbed?
Yeah, so where's the?
And then inside, we've mentioned adding up the pond, is that in the open space area?
We were talking about moving units and then putting the pond where it is, and then those units would go into one of the spots where there is the open space area in that corner there, so we'll change, change things up. And so once we kind of take all this information, we'll come in with a revised plan and revise our open space.
Okay.
And essentially that's moving open space, not re-moving open space.
Right.
There's, there's three shaded parts, and I just want some clarity on what these are. Is this a little?
There's a little pond right there, yeah.
That's a pond, okay, this?
Pond, yeah.
And then this.
Sorry, I missed Megan, was one of your three, the, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And those are already there or are they proposed?
They are proposed.
Okay, in the open space.
In the open space, yeah. I recognize it says undisturbed, but then it also allows for some uses to be in there with approval from the plan board, so we recognize we're seeking your approval on that with consultation with the Conservation Commission, which will have to go before them. But if we, there's an affirmative no here, we'll likely reconsider. Their main standpoint is they're generally passive.
Okay, so, where's the, yeah, so if we're looking at open space, the provision on, on page thirty-five is fifty percent of the total land area of the parcel shall remain undisturbed as designated open space, except for activities and improvements approved by the planning board after consultation with the Concom. And then there's the additional conditions, which is no further improvements and a permanent dated restriction. And then, there was was it, six point four C, density or maximum number of residential dwelling units? And I think the, the way at least this application is proposing it is units is they're including the commercial uses as units in their total calculation, and the duplexes are counting as two units.
Yeah, that's how I count.
Yeah. So our questions are, wait, where is it? Any guidance in terms of how they need to apply the designated open space piece? Frankly, I guess first blush to me, the idea of a small non-contiguous parcel doesn't make any sense to me. I could envision this ordinance allowing multiple open space, like significant open space areas if there were two large areas, something like that, but not something where there is a, a section that is cut off.
How big is that corner?
Very small.
Two, two smalls, yeah, so.
Could you put a house on it?
No.
No. And.
Yeah, that was right.
It is adjacent to undeveloped land, so it is, while it's not contiguous with our open space, it's contiguous with undeveloped land, and I'm not sure.
Undeveloped, but not undevelopable whole.
Right. Undisturbed, well, it'll, it'll be a permanent restriction.
No, 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 it is adjacent space.
Oh, I see, the, the, so. I read that it has to be effectively contiguous, something where that open space is preserved, and I don't feel like that, that meets a bit of corner. The other question, I tend to think that the language undisturbed as designated open space is going to exclude something like a, the access road to access the commercial property.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with you on that.
The, it's, the fact that it's contiguous is non-contiguous is the obvious thing, but the purpose of the open space, purpose of open space is for people to use it. And really, it's unusable because it's, it's behind somebody's backyard and you would even have to trespass on their land or trespass on the neighbor's land in order to get to it. So it, it, and it's technically open space, but it's not usable as open space.
Yeah, and I think that was the whole contiguous argument, doesn't say contiguous, but the intent of that open space is usability and environmental protection. I think you don't see that as environmental protection, that makes sense, but that corner doesn't.
Sam, if you, if you scale that, how much space are we talking? Because I think this might be negligible in terms of the overall count.
I think it's probably a half acre, maybe.
Right, but worth having this discussion so you don't come back with another plan that has other corners, if that's the board's sense. Currently, at least with this plan, you're fifty percent, if I understood, it does include that road that's going to the southern portion, correct?
It does not.
It does not include the road, okay. And it, it does include though the.
That triangle portion that you.
The, the much bigger triangle by the two existing, the Patterson and Kiefer Lundbergless?
Yeah.
Yeah, but he just shaded, yes.
Oh, it does include that as well.
So it includes that.
And the well, road to the well and the well area.
Yes, the bigger triangle to the east, that's assessable, accessible by, by a resident because there's roads and.
Yeah, that's basically contiguous above one of those.
And so we're on the same page, we're talking about effectively about eighteen and a half acres of open space is fifteen percent, thirty-seven and change for a lot. I had trouble following the property line in this.
It's along the, it's along the brook.
Because we have this, we have this outline.
Along the brook, okay.
Where does the boundary hit the brook?
Based, then it follows this brook.
Okay.
Oh, so it just follows the brook in the, in the south then?
Yeah, so it follows the fence and then it jumps across to the brook.
Oh, that's the dark one, it's the fence.
And this is, this is, this is the zoning line, but there's a fence underneath it.
It's a change from commercial.
And then once it gets to here, it then jumps to the brook and then follows the brook. So this is a very abnormal property line, but.
So the property line is along the, the, the zone line?
Until, until this part, Josh.
I know, but, yeah.
Until it's.
I think I, I got that right.
So I guess the next topic is like stormwater basins in the access path.
Yeah, I. So the.
And like that, that access to that, access to that well is limited. You're only there if you really have an issue. I'm not even sure about plowing it, if they have to plow it during snowstorm or storm.
And is the, so the, the proposed, the three stormwater basins, that's as part of a stormwater plan and is to help?
Yeah, that's to mitigate for the increase in stormwater runoff and volume generated by this development and the treat it before it goes into the wet. Really, for the counting of that area is conserving as much area in that commercial lot in the rear there. Is the, the main intent of it, and really choosing uses that are more passive than, use the term passive, it's not like a structure with a stormwater pond, you're just kind of looking over it. And then same thing with that access road and wellhouse is just kind of sitting there. And then same thing with that access road and wellhouse is just kind of sitting there, it's not really.
I think it makes some sense to include the, to, that the, the ponds are part of the open space. That doesn't seem to
That kind of makes sense to me, the, if I'm looking at the larger triangle where it's steep slopes and it's cut off by the driveway, that doesn't seem like it fits the spirit of, or something along those lines wouldn't fit the spirit of open space where it doesn't feel usable, but or, you know, contiguous, although I think there could be a situation where there's multiple contiguous areas, is that, any other thoughts on those two pieces, what Josh was talking about with whether stormwater collection as part of a stormwater plan could be in the open space and the use of sort of that?
So we have to consult with Conservation Commission on it.
We, we would have to consult with Conservation Commission if, for example, we said, right, the the stormwater improvements because they are disturbed, or if we said that the well could be part of the fifty percent. So making a decision like that would require CONCOM. But the, the goal hopefully is we provide direction in open space, they come back with a plan. That's the plan that we would be going to CONCOM if they're saying, here's the specific things that, to make this work, we need to be in the open space. So, sort of your understanding.
Yeah, we might even go back to COMSCOM before, coming back to you hearing this directive, get their input, bring it back before you, hopefully receive the affirmative thumbs up from the board here. But we'd rather, since you guys are ultimately the decision makers, we'd rather hear from you first than go to the CONCOM.
Yeah, I I agree, and I think that makes sense to me, which is these, if you are disturbing something in the open space, that's an improvement in this, in the context of that. It can be part of the fifty percent, but it has to be part of that.
It doesn't, it's, open space doesn't have to be undisturbed before it's open space, it has to be undisturbed after it's open space.
Remain
By no further subdivision of the designated open space.
I, I disagree with that.
Yeah, that's not
I have your figure.
I look at the word remain, remain undisturbed, meaning it's undisturbed before and it continues to be undisturbed. That's why it's remaining undisturbed. And I certainly, it looks like from the sidewalk, most of this area is going to be entirely undisturbed, but
We had like extensive discussion about disturbing of space and what counts.
Well, I would love for the whole board to take that precedent. I, I think it really almost doesn't even matter if the board is, is willing to accept those uses, uses in there.
Yeah. Does it, oh. I, I sense the board, my sense is those kinds of things would be okay if we approved them with, with consultation with the Conservation Commission. My sense is the smaller areas like those two that are effectively not usable by anyone are not open space as the ordinance sort of envisions it, which is usable space. I think that's, seems to be the sense of everyone, is there any large disagreements with that?
I'm okay with the big triangle being part of the open space, but not the little one.
Thoughts on that, I think, because that'll be pretty important, as we saw the, the proposed road is whether or not they're including that or not including that.
Yeah, to me that makes sense, and I agree with what Josh just said about the, the big triangle, I think will, will be accessible. Just by crossing a road, so.
It always gets
What did you, you said something about that?
I tend to think no. Josh and Scott tend to think that that is large enough and it is accessible enough, it's just separated by a road. That would be fine to include in open space. Megan and Greg, you have thoughts on that piece?
I agree with you, Brandon, on both of the corners.
I would tend to think that all seven of us agree on the, the small corner that's at the top of the map. But, okay, so you tend to think that, that larger corner should not be included. Greg, did you have a thought on that?
I, I would agree with that, it's about the word contiguous. And I would say that municipal association
It doesn't, contiguous is not, that's more intense than.
We don't, yes. We don't Yeah, we, we don't have the word contiguous, but I, that's why we're sort of making a intent of the open space argument.
If we have the word contiguous, this would be not
Take this for the next order.
Oh, I'm with you, I'm with you.
I, I mean, I think I'm in agreement with you about that tiny little corner, that tiny little corner
Yeah.
basically doesn't exist and I can't recall who's coming down where on the larger triangle bit.
So
This larger triangle bit like might or might not end up being where two houses end up and then the open space gets moved to another location.
Which sounds like the board's preference anyway, so.
That kind of sounded like it was your preference, too, honestly, but.
Only because we thought you liked it.
Well, at least you're being honest about it.
So, any, any opposition then to, let's open it up to public comment because of the time that we're at, and then after public comment, we'll give sort of a, a firm, how we feel about that to the public and weigh in on, on that piece as well as the others, and
And we are numerically right at the fifty percent.
We have, we have some room to play with, but it's not a substantial amount.
Any final plan, one have to be.
Does that mean we're not going to get to the units tonight?
I think we should, we should tuck that, but we can let the public weigh in on that piece and whether a single one and then we can try to have a
If we're going to get to public comment tonight, we probably have to do it.
That's what I was suggesting, yes, we'll, we'll be there, because everyone's been waiting very patiently. All right. We're, we're going to open it to public comment. For everyone who wants to speak, we'll try to keep it to about three minutes before everyone has a chance to talk. Please state your names and your address so we can have them in the minutes. And we'll make it through, but given the time, I don't know that we'll be able to loop if you have more than one. So try to get everything you want to say in on the, your first go, okay? Can describe, we're fine, if you just want to raise your hand so we can sort of work our way through. So, yeah.
Thank you, I'm Harold French, I live at one eighteen West Road. My property directly abuts this project. I've seen the project, I have absolutely no objections to it or the number of units that could be out there. I kind of prefer it to a commercial development of that area, I'd rather see homes. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, I guess public comment was shorter than anticipated. All right, so that gives us time to talk.
Hello, Brandon.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I apologize.
I'm Kevin Brad, three sixty-four Bathurst Road.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make an, an observation and maybe a recommendation, and that is there's a section where in the response, I was reading through some of the documents about kind of reading the requirements of the things that were listed for the project. A lot of them had to do with the farmstead aesthetic. And quite honestly, my background, I, I see very little in what was pictured here that fit what the intent was behind the farmstead aesthetic. I'm not saying it's not a nice looking development. I don't think that that part of the building, what the intent of this whole new way of looking at zoning, I really don't see how, what's basically a twenty-first century idea of having your garage at the very front and the entryway to the house buried in the shadows behind gables that make no sense. And, and here we have a chance for probably the first walkable neighborhood and there's no sidewalks and there's no front porches for people to communicate on. I just think that there could be a lot more done, even on a, even though it's not workforce, I think that's really what we're talking about, workforce type housing. That makes it more of a community that is different. I looked at all the other ones, you know, Amherst, some of the other places, they still had that sense of it could be anywhere. And I think the opportunity here in fitting in with the community and the acceptance would go a long way with something that really did work outside the box. They don't all have to be the same, couldn't they be a large house with an extension or a barn that had two single units in it or something? I don't know, I just think there could be a lot more done. That would probably go a long ways to create something that's truly unique and in the end probably a higher value in the, in the residents that are going to be there. I'm not against the project, I just think we could do a lot more of that part of the way things are. I think there's a reason for the board to kind of uphold, you know, what does it look and feel like in the end? How does that relate to the
Thank you, Mr. Brad.
Can I, oh, sorry, I just wanted to reference something he said.
Yeah, we can, we start back, Esther, yeah.
Beth Blair on Hackleboro Road. I did just have a question, something like the smaller triangle that's across the road for any of the open space, could that be used by the residents if they indeed have an association? Could they decide to put a park there or a playground? Is that still considered open space if it's used for the recreation of the neighborhood?
Approval, I believe, right?
I don't believe so, I think that if, if, I believe if the resident, if the condo wants to have like a tennis court, it can't be on the space. They have to have their own dedicated space for, for residential amenities like swimming pools, tennis courts, parking, trash.
And those spaces are not currently included in this plan, is that correct? So how does that affect any of your calculations if this is a bunch of or you're just assuming that each individual house acts individually with their own trash, their own place sets, their own, correct?
Barbecue garden.
Okay, but there was mention of having an association that would have to take care of the open area. So how, who forms that association? Is that part of the development of the property or once the people are there, are they left to their own to develop an association?
They need to provide agent documents that protect the open space and then detail what their each way goes.
If you look at six point four I and then huh, where is it, two and three? The designated open space should be permanently deeded to an owners association, so basically they have
Right, that was my question.
They have to form as part of this and, and so I think the proposal is a condominium and there's limited common area and sort of the, they're individual lots and then they have this common area that they all collectively own through their owners association and have that responsibility to maintain.
I think there'll be, there'll be a condominium, bylaws or whatever they call
Right.
as part of their, their, you know, ultimate application.
Well, that I guess is my further question, is the onus of forming the association on just the people living there or the developers?
Beforehand, it's
Yeah. Because there's
And it's a little more complicated because of the commercial properties, which are also condos.
Yeah.
All right, any other public comment and then after that, I think we've got to get to
Can I quickly
Units minimum?
Reference, what, Kevin, let's see, so I agree with you, that was one of my first points of the design review. I think it's improved, but I will say, I was, you didn't show it in the presentation, but I was driving through Litchfield and just this past weekend and I drove, and I was like, oh, I'm sorry, those are really out of place. And then I was like, wait, those look really familiar, and they pretty much look identical to what you submitted, same colors, same style, different layout, but, so I would agree that there is more work to be done there, but I don't think we're getting to design tonight, but I just wanted to say that I drive past one of your developments and it stuck out like a sore thumb, it just did.
Sorry, so make sure I don't see any hands.
There's someone up here.
Oh, good catch. I can't, is it Greg? I can't read the last name from this distance.
My name is Sweetland King, I live at two fifteen Interval Road. My apologies if I missed this at the beginning of the meeting, but upon listening to the information on the impact study, I did not hear anything mentioned about the impact on the school district. And I know that they were provided with information by the superintendent.
Yes, thank, thank you for the comment, so we, we do have the letter, it is going to be, I'm not going to read it out loud into the record, but it is going to be entered into the record, we have, I said it at the beginning, a letter from Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission and a letter from Michael Tursi, Superintendent of Shaker Regional, so both of those are part of the record.
May I address the school, school issues for a moment?
Sure.
I, I, this was not persuasive to me, that Michael Tursi's letter about having to move a grade or displacing art and music or hiring another teacher, that didn't make much sense to me, the way, if I, if I'm assuming, let's say thirty-four, thirty-four units and I'm like, you know, maybe half of them all have kids or something and, you know, current statistics are a little bit less than two kids per, per parental household or whatever, so that makes thirty-four kids. There's like, I think ten percent go to private schools, so subtract a couple and you have down to, you know, thirty kids or something like that. And they're all going to be in different grades, so it's not like they're all in fifth grade. And so like the impact seems much more diffuse to me than this, than this letter suggests.
Which section are you in? Because the seven with shared facilities, I thought this suggests the development could add about nine schoolchildren to the school system. Shaker Regional School has seen lower but stable enrollment over the past four years, but it's seen an increase in twenty-hundred and four.
Oh, I didn't see any numbers.
Okay, you're reading superintendent.
You're, you're reading a different document.
Oh, okay, that, I didn't see that.
Yeah, so, but
So that just seemed like it was two, the one from Michael Tursi seemed like it overstated the impact a lot.
And, and to your point, and I just, I think our role here is looking at the cluster neighborhood standards. The impact that gets a regional impact notice is different than what we're looking at for our standards, so the potential for regional impact gets them standing as a butter, but it doesn't change what the requirements are in cluster neighborhoods, does that make sense? And then that letter is
It just means we have to notice them.
Right, and, and so to the extent that it's relevant to one of the cluster neighborhood requirements that we go through, we consider it, but it's
I don't word it's relevant.
Yeah, we're, we're no longer at the point of is there impact, the impact got them a butter standing. Okay. So Lisa, yeah.
Hi, Lisa Carlson, Laurel Road. I'd like some clarification about public water supply wells and a question about shared septic units. I don't understand how the map of the, of the drawings of, of a potential layout allows for space for septic, I need, I need to understand that better. Can anybody provide that explanation? Where's the space for septic?
So, that's on my list, I think, I'm trying to, to move through orderly just to make sure we don't miss anything.
Is that another meeting?
I think it's going to have to be addressed at another meeting.
Okay, fine. Okay, fine.
Um, what I am hoping to be able to give them a little bit more clarification before we leave is how to finish calculating that open space and what are the units, and then they're going to come back with a new plan and then we'll be able to look at that more concrete plan to say, this lot, can it fit everything it needs to? And we can work our way through the plan. That way, does that make sense? And I think that's your understanding as well, all right. So, our outstanding questions, we had sort of a discussion on how large of an area for open space, because we have that small triangle, the larger triangle. And then how do we account for commercial units and residential units for a mixed use residential? And I think
I just have a basic question about commercial
Just say your name real quick.
Of Calvin Todd, Barnrow Road. When you talk mixed use, commercial and residential, is there a percentage that you can be commercial versus residential? If you're talking thirty, thirty-five units, you know, or thirty-seven, the magic number, you're squeezing out all the residential, but now you're trying to stop in five acres of commercial. At what point are you turning a commercial property into a residential neighborhood? So is there a sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, is there anything in the provisions that sort of allocates a percentage or an intent of the mixed use?
I don't think so, and I think that was part of the problem and why the ordinance got amended, is that we had
The new ordinance says fifty percent.
Commercial, right. So for purposes of this, we have nothing in the ordinance.
So it has no play in determining the value of it.
Right. Okay.
Your question here.
Question here.
Beth McQueen, Southwest Road. Calvin's question brings up one from me. If we're in the old ordinance for some things, but it's the new ordinance that allows mixed use, how is that?
So I think
Am I misinterpreting something?
The old ordinance would have had to allow mixed use. So I think the, the, the old ordinance would have had to allow mixed use. My understanding is that it just didn't provide any direction on, on how you handle that. Which was part of why design review was not very productive prior to the meeting. All those missing questions. All right. Sorry, I'm looking at the time over your head. So, uh, we get to, to units. Any thoughts on, on units or any limitations or how that is addressed? There were some thoughts earlier and I think you had one at least.
So our, our baseline number is thirty-two.
Thirty-two and then adjust by any density that we choose to grant under those provisions, yeah?
Yeah. And they're looking for density bonus based on open space. And community water.
Yeah. And so we can, we can get to that too, but six point six, we've got a lot of flexibility there. It's entirely discretionary as to whether to award them. Uh, they've pointed out two and are asking for fifteen percent, which gets them, um, is that five additional and then it's thirty-five residential and two commercial.
I, I think they comply. I, I don't really agree with how, how they comply, but I think the, the.
Well, complying is step one. We can still choose not to grant a bonus even though they, they need to. It is still discretionary for exemplary cluster neighborhood. Yeah, so before we get there. Yes. So I tend to think absent anything in the ordinance that limits it, that they can do this, where there is, you know, larger amounts that are ultimately a unit for those commercial units. They've got that proposed retail unit to the north. They've got the proposed unit to the south. They, they are talking about it as storage, but unless there was some sort of restriction, we don't actually have any control over, over what commercial use goes there. Um, and then thirty-five units divided up as they did between duplex and single.
We don't have control, I'm trying to access so many notes in so many different places, but we did have intent for retail. And I understand that it's driven by the market, but this is also going to determine what the market wants there. Is this road that is private looking and not, there's no space for signage? There's no, um, I can't see like a small retail that would be supportive of the community doing well in a space like this. Therefore, the market's going to.
And I'll just add that it, we can always ask, we cannot necessarily compel voluntary restrictions
Right.
in terms of, you know, types of commercial uses that are allowed and excluding some, so that is.
But it is in my consideration if they want bonuses, is this is exemplary.
Right. Any disagreement then that a, a single commercial use can be a single unit regardless of the amount? As long as they're complying with the open space requirements? That there is not like a, a maximum that they can put into a, a single commercial unit or a single residential unit? Does this make sense?
I, I'm not sure I understand your question, but if I restate your question to you, this, so I just want to hint out, um, if I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight buildings and the claim that that's a single unit, is, is that the question you're asking?
Yeah, can they have this larger commercial unit? And then any, you know, commercial use that is allowable on that lot can go there? And that use would dictate the amount of buildings, correct?
Which would have theoretically any number of things.
Um, so that's, that's the question. Is there sort of a limit there in terms of those units? I don't think the ordinance, as it existed, had limits. And maybe that's where we just, we have to talk about that.
Do we have a definition for a commercial unit?
No.
That's a problem, we should fix that.
Right, Mr. Chair, this is obviously something that we've had a hard time with the whole time is calculating. Again, it was pointed out correctly that the market will dictate what goes there. Hard for us to pre-design some non-built-to-suit use on this property. And then to determine what counts as a unit is nearly impossible at the beginning of this project. With, I mean, to, to tell you what will be there and how it should be, so.
To me, this, this gets to the crux of, um, my concern about this project is that, um, you've been very clear that commercial is going to be phase two. And, um, there's, there's no assurance that, you know, Joe and Jane, commercial developer, can even put a commercial use here. You know, I have, you know, I have no assurance at all that, that this is even viable and for anybody, um, never mind a particular use, but for, for anybody. And, um, kicking the can down the road, which is, I feel like, you know, that's a phase two, is like someday there's going to be commercial. And, you know, given that this is a commercial district and, and residential is, is sort of, you know, shoehorned into a commercial district. Uh, you know, I, I know we talked about this before, you know, it, 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 I, I want some assurance that there's going to be a commercial use here. And, um, you know, there should be another person sitting at your table saying, I'm going to build a whatever. And, um, and, and until that happens, you know, I, not that I care too much about what the commercial use is, but that a commercial use is even viable. And I, I don't know enough about commercial usages and planning to know whether, you know, a lot this size, you know, configured on this road, so just like the way it is, i- is even viable in any, and for anything, for any commercial use. And, and so, uh, you know, I, I, I want, I want assurance that there's going to be commercial use here and here. Otherwise, this is not a commercial proposal at all.
Yeah, and I think based on our group's collective experience, I know, I can think of a project I worked on for many, in Summersworth, for example, it's denser apartments in the front. And then in the back of that acreage is this storage, you know, because it's a lower density use, something where you already built some access roads. It's easy enough for people to go, maybe you go get a couple, you get your kayaks out for the summer, you put them back in for the winter, whatever, that type of thing. So in a spot where this is a little bit further removed from the exit, it makes it logical to have something that's a bit more passive and a bit less actively used, which is why, of course, we show that retail space up at the front. So the proof of concept is there and that uses like this exist in places behind residential neighborhoods.
The proof of concept for storage units, which we already have a lot of and have problems with historically.
Of course. If, if I might.
Not a proof of concept for anything except storage units.
Everyone, if I'm part, part of the, you know, developing team, I, I think the assurance is partially baked into the approvals. You'd be approving a commercial law. The market's ultimately going to dictate what comes back to you for site plan approval. And that's where you have more control, right? You don't have to approve any site plans from it. It's a commercial lot, commercial unit, that you'd have a second play to be out. So in, in terms of providing an answer as to whether or not there's any credible use commercially for that property, the market's going to ultimately dictate that. We're going to make it available to the market. The market's going to come back and say, oh, well, maybe it's not self-stored. Maybe it's a solar field, maybe it's something none of us could possibly think of that comes up five years from now. But it's going to be there and, and again, it's baked into the approvals. We won't, or nobody will be able to do anything different than a commercial use on that, like, if you will.
Respectfully, I, I disagree with that. And the reason why is, let's say you, you made this commercial spot, uh, you know, odd shape, figure eight or something, and no commercial user in, on the face of the earth would say, I can't build anything there. And so we can designate it commercial, but it's not actually usable as commercial. I want assurance that, that there is a, that there, that this actually can be used for a commercial. I don't, and I'm not prejudging what the use is. I don't care what it is, if it's a cement plant, I mean, that's a different issue, right?
High value.
On a flat five acre lot, you saw it today, do you think there's no use for that?
I, I don't know, I don't know. And because.
Well, we can't prove that to you.
So, um.
Well, that, because you don't have the commercial.
So we have, we have.
And that's not our.
Hold on, everyone, just try not, try not to talk over each other.
Okay.
We, we can keep going, but, um, Josh, you have.
No, I, I'm not my point.
Okay, so, yeah, Greg.
Um, when we worked on these, this ordinance, the, uh, the point was to jumpstart commercial. It wasn't to provide a big opportunity for residential. It was saying, okay, we'll allow a few little bit of residential here and use that and get it to jumpstart the commercial. And that it's part of the development of things, commercial and residential. And they both have to happen.
And, well, I agree you can't give assurances, but you designed this in a specific way. You looked at a mixed use spot and prioritized, in a commercial zone, prioritize residential. And this is very clearly secondary, both in your phasing, in your design. So you can't control the market, but you could have designed this upfront and put residential back here, but you'd have pure units, right? So that was intentional. And you can't have assurances on whether or not that's viable, but you designed it this way. And that's what we're reviewing is the design of it.
I, I can tell you, I think a five acre lot in that area flat, the way that it is, is viable for something. I, I could absolutely put self-storage there. I could absolutely put a solar field there. It would be viable.
So do it, right.
Is this viable for commercial as well?
Uh, I, I would think it's viable.
So this was a choice, so that's a choice for the discussion.
Well, in terms of, in terms of, but, but, but I don't believe, I don't believe it was a market there.
All right, guys, try, try to stop the.
And secondarily, you're dismissing the piece that's right on the main road that I think Sam talked about potentially being a coffee shop or some other retail use in the future. And that is, again, a viable, allowable use in the zone, correct?
Right, so.
So, so, so it wasn't an afterthought, it was, it was one up front and one up there.
Sorry, I'll, I'll let Sam talk and then I'll, we'll kind of focus on the board cause we're, I'm trying to be conscious of the time, but.
Thank you, maybe I can play, uh, middle ground here. So there's kind of two aspects of viable that we're kind of talking about here. There's the market viable and there's can you physically build it and construct it on the lot? We showed you an example of storage units and we showed you an example of a Starbucks con- concept. Does it make sense? And I purposely designed the stormwater to account for eighty percent impervious area, which is a very high number of impervious, make sure the basins can accommodate that. So essentially anything less than eighty percent of impervious area could fit there. Would it make the board, um, more accepting of the viability of the lot? If I provide additional kind of concept layouts of other, other uses that could potentially go there besides just storage units? And maybe there's a use that, it, it, just so I can demonstrate that this lot is a viable commercial piece for all different aspects, not just storage use. And same thing with the front, with, I can put a concept together that is retail, um, or office space with the appropriate amount of parking. And then as long as I'm below my eighty percent impervious numbers, I'm within my assumptions. And would that give the board comfort? And knowing that, and then the second part of that is, we have to create condo documents. And in those condo documents, the, the board will review them and deem if they're acceptable. And in that we can restrict those lots, it will always be commercial on those, on those boards. And then if we want to make for, um, an exemplary cluster development, maybe there is some considerations of, well, we don't want to reduce potential uses, but maybe there's some consideration on that, especially when it comes to the, the bonus density. Does that kind of sound like a reasonable plan forward to demonstrate what?
We'll discuss, I, all right. So, hearing Megan and Greg and Josh. Hey, we are not going to be able to control what goes into a commercial unit. But at the same time, what is fully within our control is the density bonus. And we have a commercial zone and a proposal that would be almost entirely, I shouldn't say almost entirely, but like thirty-five out of thirty-seven units, at least proposed, are residential. Um, the voters of the town at least after the fact have shown their intent. They want the commercial zone to have fifty percent commercials, so real commercial. So while we can't get any assurance in terms of these two units, we can find that a mixed use residential and commercial that so heavily prioritizes residential and that doesn't have defined commercial uses where we can't actually evaluate how well they work together, that bonus density is not appropriate for a proposal like this.
Correct.
And so I think those are the, the two things that we can, we're not going to get that assurance on commercial.
Right, and that's what I was agreeing, they can't give us assurance. But what I'm saying is that if I'm looking for an exemplary design for mixed use that's prioritizing commercial, this is not exemplary to me.
And, and I tend to agree. I would say we're not going to get any assurance on these two things. And I do appreciate that they have, um, proposed ideas for what could go there, that we can't control that. But in the absence of having defined things and in, with this ratio of residential to commercial units, I would be disinclined to grant any density bonus looking at this proposal, Lucy. We'll see what.
I, I want to go further, I want assurance. I want the commercial proposal at the table at the same time with some understanding that that's, um. Going to be built. Going to be, rather than, you know, phase two could be thirty-five years from now. And I don't think that's what the purpose of the commercial zone is. The purpose of the commercial zone is to have commercial uses. And this makes it so that, uh, yeah, maybe someday we'll have commercial use, but there's no, I want, this is supposed to be commercial with, with, you know, an additive of, of residential. And this is, like Megan said, precisely the opposite. And I, I want to see, I, I want to see your commercial proposal at the table.
I just, I don't think that's what we get in subdivision. I mean, even the, the two residential unit that was next to my house that we heard, they could choose to never build that residential building.
Well, but that's not a.
We, we create units for a purpose and then someone can use that unit. Normal subdivision, you create lots and a person can use that lot, but we don't.
But we can have a phase development and until phase one is complete, they can't start phase two.
Yeah, phase one should be the commercial and then phase two should be the residential. I'd be okay with that. Assure me that there's going to be commercial development here, either by having a person at the table or a memorandum of understanding or a, or you reverse the phases or something. But this is a commercial space and I, you know, you know, maybe some, yes, it would help if there were, um, you know, other types of uses. You could, you know, demonstrate that there's some other kinds of uses that are available other than, than, than a, um, storage, you know, facility. But, um, and that would help, but I, that's, that's, no one's ever going to come there. I want to see, I want to see the commercial use before I see the, the residential, because this is a commercial zone. And we don't have a lot of commercial zones in, in Canterbury. We have this and there's one on one oh six and there's a little bit on the other side of exit eighteen and that's it. And so we're, um, by, i- i- if, if, by, you know, kicking the can down the road, calling it phase two, and we never get any commercial, we've, um, essentially undone, uh, exactly, our, 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 our ordinance says this is commercial and we've approved something that will never be commercial. And I don't think that's allowed by our zoning ordinance. This is supposed to be commercial. And until there's commercial, I, I think this is kind of a nonstarter.
Ian? May I ask a question? We're, right now we're talking about density bonus, right? And, and that, uh, I'll say overlaps with this commercial question. And another one I heard was that what's shown right now, maybe partially because there's not as much commercial as you're going to see, that it's not compelling enough for density bonuses. Could you talk a little bit about what would be compelling for bonuses? If, if they were a little more commercial, would you be more inclined to, to grant even more density bonus? Because there are other ways we can potentially sort of parcel this up. And I, I hear what you're saying. We, we, we can certainly make an effort to go out and pre-sell, um, access to the commercial spaces. That, that's going to depend on, on a lot of the feedback we get from you and whether it makes sense, uh, the, the ultimate density makes sense for adding more cargo and, you know, compelling people to maybe do something sooner than, than what we're.
Well, I think coupling the, the density bonus with, with this is like a, 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 a way to achieve, um, the middle ground. But before you get there, um, I, I think this proposal is essentially rezoning. I mean, I know that's the legal word, but we're rezoning this. If there's no assurance of commercial, we're rezoning this. If there's no assurance of commercial, we're rezoning this to a, to a residential zone. When our zoning ordinance and the town and all that has clearly made this commercial first. And, and this is a commercial zone, we are rezoning and I think that's unlawful. I think that's outside of the spirit of the ordinance. And, and so I, I, we personally, I, I can't vote for this until there's a commerce, assurance of commercial use. However configured or whatever type, that, that's not really my business. But, but it is my business to make sure that this is commercial. And by calling it phase two and making it someday in the future, I think we're essentially rezoning this and you can't do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rich?
I want to echo, if I, if I can add my two cents here, I want to echo what Josh and, and Greg have been saying. Is that the commercial zones in Canterbury are very narrow and very limited and we don't have much of it. And to try to jumpstart that zone, there was, um, some addition of mixed use. And the residential to, to spur development of the commercial zones. And echoing Josh's sentiment, it seems like phase one was first proposed. And then the storage in the back was added. And when there was pushback, they seemed that there, all of a sudden there appeared the development, commercial development at the front of the property. But that was after the fact. And it, it seems like more of an appeasement for the plan. But again, like Josh said, I, I'd like to see phase one be the front commercial. With the resi- residential at the very least, otherwise it is defeating the purpose of the, the mixed use and, and the, in the combined residential areas.
Thank you, Rich. Megan?
The addition of the, the commercial in the front was during a design review, which is the intent of the design review. You're coming to, I was just about, so that's, that's fair. I want to answer your, I'm sorry, for you.
Harold.
Harold?
Harold.
Errol.
Harold.
Um, I wanted to answer your question. Uh, this came up and we can go through the minutes for the sake of time. But I did list out things that the town wants to see in terms of commercial. So for me, this is a design question. This is essentially saying, like, if you're, you know, you're designing a house and you're like, here's, here's our bedroom. We're going to have a bathroom on it. We're going to put the bed in this tiny bathroom area and we're going to put the toilet right in the middle of the room. That's what this looks like. So for me, it's what are you, we can't guarantee what's going to go in there, but you can certainly design to incentivize certain things. So for me, it would be designing to incentivize those things that I listed. If you want to look back in the minutes, I think it was the first or second meeting of, um. Of what the town wants in terms of, of retail and, um, you know, elder care, those sorts of things.
And, and those sorts of things, you could, how would you feel more comfortable with a density bonus?
If, for me, yes, I can't speak for everyone.
Yeah, I mean, i- in terms of density and final decision, we're going to have to see, you know, whatever the plan is and the board will have. I mean, we can give you, and I think it's helpful for each of us to give you our, our inclination. Uh, I think, and to Josh and, and Rich's point. Yeah, it is, it is, okay, but this, we are stuck with an unfortunate aspect of the old ordinance that allowed this. Which seems contrary to what the voters of town wanted in this area. But we can't hold that against the applicant. So we can't control how they use units outside of what they use, right? So commercial, any commercial use, that part's outside our control. I don't think we can force them to come forward with a particular applicant for those. But at the same time, we can say, and I think we have good information from the town as to what they would like to see. And what, when they created this zone is a significant amount of commercial. And short of a significant amount of commercial use in this area, in the commercial zone. We can choose within our power and we have that full discretion to not find this to be an exemplary plan. So that's where I see it, is not that we can compel them to build a particular thing subdivision. We, we create units, the unit is limited to whether it's commercial or residential or whatever, and then someone puts it in. If they get this plan and they have two commercial units and they can't find someone to put there, well, then those lots just sit there. And they have every incentive in the world after this to go find someone to build some commercial use there. And so I would hope that that ultimately compels something in these areas.
I think they have no incentive at all to install commercial use back there. I mean, the thing's operating, everyone's happy.
I mean, if.
And then there's going to be people living here who are going to show up and be opposed to a commercial use. And, um, and, and I do think we have the authority to not say what kind of commercial use is. But we have the authority to insist that there is a commercial use. And I think I want to insist that there's a commercial use.
They'd be stuck with two commercial lots playing, paying joint ownership fees on a condominium with all of those other residential owners. But at least.
And the condominium documents would speak to them being commercial use.
So. Given where, I think, I think you've heard a number of our, our different opinions in, in terms of what the various board members would like to see. I think, um, if we can just wrap up that one piece on open space, so we don't get a plan that raises an issue down the road. I, I heard a number of people say that, and I forget, I apologize, it's getting late, which board members? That larger area that, that could be open space, it's only bisected by a road, it could be usable. Is that the general sense of the whole board? Can we say that's something that is? That, certainly not the tiny triangle, which is, you know, not going to be usable by any real amount of people. Compared to the vast majority of this, like eighteen acre spot.
I think it was four to three that you could not include the big triangle. I, because I felt like I was in the minority on that.
And we're, and we're potentially going to work on a design change that we might just negate that question entirely.
Right, so i- in terms of just your sense, maybe we'll just give a sense, because obviously we'll have to see the final plan. And analyze open space and how the, the ordinance addresses it. Scott, do you have a sense that that can or cannot be included? Something that is a large area like that, that is only separated by a road?
So my sense is it can be included.
Okay. Megan?
No.
Cannot? Um, I, I tend to think it is cannot, but I think I'm sort of more open to see what the final plan would look like. And this doesn't have to be your final, I'm just, we're trying to give them a sense that they, they can have a little bit more certainty when they come back with the plan that we're looking at.
I'm a little bit inclined to say that it can, provided that it is, you know, wooded, otherwise untouched, that kind of thing. But I'm, I'm very optimistic about that.
Josh? I think it's currently configured, it feels like open space to me.
Alright, uh, Rich?
No.
There, okay. So we're sort of split on that point, um, and, and we'll see what the, the final one. So you, use your best judgment. If you can make it a little bigger, maybe you get more people. Again, I, certainly my mind's not made up until we see a final plan and, and what it looks like as a whole.
Yeah, and then I guess the last kind of question is to confirm that commercial lot, is that considered the one unit or is that?
Yeah, I think they just.
I think that's all dependent on this other thing we were talking about.
Right, well, but I mean, the, just the questions, and, and when we talked about that earlier.
I think if only one commercial entity is allowed to use that space, then we have to consider it as one unit.
Right. Businesses is the wrong word, but yeah.
Because there's no other conceivable.
But I don't know, what if it's two different storage companies, for example? Someone might say, well, this is good for me, but I, I want to, I want, I want to have, you know, two different businesses there. And that's two units. I, I have no idea. And that's why, that, that's, that's the part of the mystery of this that.
Can you just note that in the minutes, yeah?
That we don't know what the commercial, the, the commercial use is, it's not at your table. And so whether this is, you know, like I say, I, I think it's probably usable, but I don't really know. You know, a- and so I don't think you can say, decide how many units it is until you have something more developed than.
Until you know what it is. Can I throw a hypothetical out there? If this was a, if this was a commercial cluster subdivision and there were ten commercial lots. What would you, what would be the board's opinion on that?
Each lot would require one acre minimum.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's not the question. So if it was a commercial cluster subdivision and the lot could be point five acres or five acres. Would that be one commercial unit or would that be point five commercial units or would that be five commercial units? I'm just saying like a standard commercial subdivision. And I would, I would, if it's one commercial lot, it's one unit. And then if it's just a subdivision, the board isn't going to ask for a site plan on each individual lot.
That's the way we've been doing it. And, and there's a, there's a family in town who does that. But I, I don't know, it's so hypothetical.
Yeah, I'm just trying to simplify the question.
Those high bay units are, uh, each one is a unit.
Each one's a unit, I think.
Each one's a unit and each one's allowed a, yeah.
And they come in here every time that one of the businesses is sold, they come in, you know, sort of take a pro forma vote?
Yeah, so that, that sounds like one, and I don't know what site you're talking about, but that sounds like you have, but I've always referred to it as like industrial flex. But you have a unit that is able to be sold off as one unit in a building. I'm saying one person owns that entire lot, that, that has the structure on it.
So that would be like if you have a rental property with four apartments in it and you're saying that's one unit?
I'm saying when it comes to commercial site planning, if I am doing a site plan, it's on one lot and, and that's it.
So and if it's, uh, four different office buildings, it's still one?
If one person owns it, it's one unit. It's one lot, one owner. And again, I think the challenge in all of this is that your ordinance doesn't really give us the direction on where we need to go with this.
Okay.
I, I really think the basic problem is that you don't have a commercial person in your, in your team.
It's so.
I, I designed several, several commercial projects.
We don't have a dedicated commercial person in the team. But I think Sam has been involved in commercial projects. I think Keith has been commercial, I've done commercially, that, that's what our needs.
But, you know, as I said, I mean, this is subdivision and this is, I mean, it's, as I see it, it's effectively a lot. But whoever is going to then come propose a commercial use has to come in for site plan review. And that is the point where we are making sure that it fits the requirements. And so, you know, in terms of one unit, one units, they can come with any viable commercial plan. That they can have a site plan that will fit those lot dimensions and those access requirements.
Here's a question. So if this is five acres and we're saying it's one unit. But the commercial person can then do whatever they want to it and make it five different commercial things. Then each one of those commercial things should be using one acre, but they've used the acre allotment over here.
You, you essentially described a, a further subdivision. But also.
Well, I mean, that's, we don't know what, we, we, we don't know whether any or. Any commercial use in the world is, can fit in this box. Or what subset of potential uses can fit in this box. We don't, we don't know that.
I can show, I can show you what could fit in that box, but.
Yeah, I think that's the best we can do right now. Because I don't think that there's anything in this ordinance or in the RSAs that tells me we have to pre-market it and pre, basically signed up someone for this.
I think it's our ordinance requires that because this is a commercial, um.
The commercial zone doesn't require that there's an active use in every zone. Otherwise, the gas station across the street would have to be opened by town ordinance.
No, no, no. But by, 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 by calling it phase two, that may never happen. Then I feel like I'm rezoning in, 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 in opposition to what the town has clearly said is commercial. And rezoning I can't do. And, and, um, and, and so I, I feel like I am turning a commercial without some assurance. I'm turning a commercial zone into a residential zones. And I, and I feel like, I, I think that's just unlawful. We're not allowed to do that.
Um, we're just, and I, and I, here, I think we have heard these comments and this, there is. Maybe not more that we can do tonight, particularly with this time, and we need to at least open the next hearing so that we can find a new date. I maybe didn't get every answer. I think we have moved through a lot of those.
Yeah.
In terms of timing for moving to continue. And you had spoken about, uh, potentially wanting to go to the conservation commission to talk about the, um, you know, whatever your next plan is. The, um, what am I looking for? The ponds and access to the pump.
Use of the open space, yeah.
Those, those two in particular, the use of those open spaces, is that still your intent? So would it make sense to push like two months or a month and a half? Or I don't know what the schedule is for the conservation commission. Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Chair, could we not do the same thing with whether or not this is one unit or two? Just, we're not voting on it, but can you go through and get?
We, yeah, we, we can do that piece too. That's a, a good point.
Not with everything else.
Good, good point. We'll do that after. I just, let's check on the conservation commission.
So the next conservation commission meeting, one is August fourteenth?
So when we're pushing deadlines this far, we need to make sure we're not past the statutory requirement, right?
Well, unless they're agreeing and that's part of it, I want to have this discussion. And so at eight fourteen, do you anticipate that you would be able to make eight fourteen? So that we're looking at some meeting after eight fourteen? Or do you think that, you know, based on what you've heard here?
Yeah, we can make that eight fourteen meeting and then, um, come back before you on the next one. We might not have.
That's fair enough.
Perfect changes to the plans, but at least we're keeping the application moving forward. Hopefully we'll have the other studies, um, some of that.
Fair point. So let's, let's plan that, so that's the soonest at least. And if you end up needing more time and if that doesn't work out, you can come.
Is that eight fourteen here or con?
No, I think, uh, she was, Cal was saying.
Eight fourteen, eight fourteen is conservation commission, eight twenty-six is planning board.
Yes. Okay, so.
So, so you'll be back here on this issue on, on, on August twenty-sixth?
Presumably with a modified plan in some respects. And then they've, they've talked to the CONCON at least about that piece. To make a point, and, and before we go. Josh, please jump in if I'm describing this differently, because I'm going to try to describe the two pieces. I think one view was a commercial unit. It is basically a unit that has to have a commercial use. Someone would have to come back for site plan review. But we can't sort of require or need a defined plan for that now. And the other version, uh, is that for it to be a commercial unit, you need to have a proposal for the actual use on that commercial space.
I feel like you said the same thing to a ace.
I thought, I thought I said different. So, uh, version one is, you, you don't have to define the exact commercial use on a unit. It is just a unit that is, one owner in the future comes back for the site plan review. Second view is, right now, for this cluster subdivision, you need sort of a, sort of defined use for those units. So that the board can evaluate whether it's a unit. Does that, some, the second one, some of your perspective?
Yes, and, and, and the second one, and further, I don't think we can decide how many units it is. Until we have the commercial use defined, whether it's one or two, I don't know. It depends upon, or three, I don't know what, what it is.
I'll, I'll try one more. So, um, one view, it, they're just defining units for future commercial use. And we are not talking about what's in them right now in the subdivision. And second view is, y- you need to define what commercial use or uses is in that spot. For purposes of even determining whether it's a unit.
Right, what I'm, I think you are making sense when I said that doesn't make sense. The second option doesn't make any sense.
Oh, well, then that's where we can each have our own, you know, say.
Okay.
But I think those are the, the two that we're at least discussing, or at least one person believes in each of them. So, um, apologies for putting you on the spot first, as always, Scott.
No, you're happy to go first?
So what, what are your?
Each is a unit in my view. I think to do otherwise is asking something impossible.
Meaning just right now, it's, it's a unit, but we don't have to talk about the, right, okay.
Yep, two units. One, that's correct, one and two.
Megan?
Yes, currently it's two units.
Okay, right.
It's two units.
I don't understand when you say one unit or two. What's the, it, we're talking about?
No, it's not, no. Meaning, I, I think the option was two units with undefined future commercial use.
Correct.
Yes, uh, that's how I see it.
So the, 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 the space on the south, we're calling that two units?
We're, no, sorry, we're calling that one unit. And at some future point, a unit owner will come in with a proposal. But then we are not, right now, in the subdivision defining that. So I think that's what, um, we were saying.
I feel like that could answer the question.
Disagree, I think, from your.
I can't, I can't answer the question. I can't, I can't answer the question, I think it is.
Can I fairly say that your, your position earlier was you would like to see in the subdivision, the, the use that is going to be in a unit?
I don't need to the use, I need assurance that their, that the commercial use is actually happening in a timely manner. Or else I would, and if I don't, I feel like I'm rezoning and that's illegal.
Okay, and Rich, do you have a sense on that?
I. I'm, I, I agree both sides. One unit, yes, but again, I would like to see, as Josh said, assurances. For example, the, the front commercial area, we, and the assurance that the front commercial area is going to be phase one with the residential, phase one A or, or phase two. It can be in conjunction, but I, I think by starting with the housing, it's circumventing the commercial zoning. So interpret that how you want, but.
All right, thank you, Rich, and I guess the last thing I'll just add is obviously you're free to propose any conditions you want in terms of types of commercial uses or any other limitations, if you think that helps the, the overall plan.
Do we have a new, a new, uh, date?
With that, eight twenty-six, I'd like a, a motion to continue to, this application to eight twenty-six?
Motion.
Motion to continue.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
All right, that's not my question, oh, my question is, we have approved that the application is complete. There are a certain number of days by which we must make a decision. And if we have extended past that certain number of days, they have to give us.
Yeah, I think they did in, in requesting, in requesting to, to meet the ConCon next, that's how I interpret it. We're also only thirty, we're only thirty days in.
Yeah, you're ninety.
Yeah, all right. We really appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all, so it's a long night. Next hearing on seventy-five Intervale Road and my apologies, sorry you had to wait through all of that. Do you?
Folks, could you take that outside?
Sam? Yes, Sam, do you mind just stepping outside to talk to them, it'd be great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. All right, what, what I, I think given the, the time, what I'd like to be able to do is at, at least look at completeness of the application. I think it was pretty straightforward and then we can find a date to continue with, that is not the same date as one fourteen West Road. Are you the applicants for seventy-five? Again, I'm, I'm so sorry, can you, do you mind coming up?
Interesting information.
All right. Where was I? Lost, that's one fourteen, I was just seeing if I, well, I lost my. Uh, there was, I might just have to pull it up on the website. Just going to give it a minute for everyone to filter out, so there's not too much noise. Thank you.
We know who this is?
I'm just gonna see if there's a load screen, I know.
Thank you for bringing this.
They're just outside?
Oh, there's a picture of, of a PowerPoint slide, so either him or his dad, you have to assume. These ones, these, thank you, Cal, yeah. Oops, that one is.
This is the one fourteen.
And, oh, and Megan's got the other one.
No, it's.
It looked pretty good to me, but I did not have the, the focus to get into the detail with the. All right, and we still have, Rich, are you good for a little? I mean, we can see how far we can get on this and it may be, I think it's, it's definitely more straightforward than the last one. You guys good, do you want to try to hear the application to the extent we can, see if it's longer, if we get to a stopping point? If we hit any snags, I think it's likely we're going to continue, but, okay. Sound good, so we'll, we'll let you move, start the application, let us know what the proposal is, what you've provided and we'll do our best.
Could you start with your name?
Yep, my name is Jonathan Travis, I'm from Royal Tanner. Oh, am I supposed to go? Rick Zeller, seventy-seven Intervale, I think I'm lot something that's.
You could use C N Zeller, seventy-seven Intervale.
Benjamin McGaw, seventy-dollar Intervale.
Okay. I apologize, missed, um, all right.
Ready?
Floor's yours.
Okay, so I'm here to present this for the meat ops and Zeller. So, it's a, we have a lot, just show you real quick. About fourteen and fifteen, so they're fifteen and twenty acres, three big lots on Intervale Road. So, proposal is a lot line adjustment and then a minor subdivision. So, what would happen is parcel A, the, the, the yellow lines are the existing lines right now. So that's the line between fifteen and fourteen. The adjustment would take parcel A from fourteen, give it to fifteen, and also parcel B would also go to fifteen.
Okay, so the parcel is that like back lot, or back acreage, I should say, and then that triangle along Intervale as well at the top?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, out of lot, that resulting lot fifteen would come a new lot fifteen dash one right here. With, so this front addition changing at the same point, it would be three hundred feet, three hundred feet, roughly, I'm, over. So, the original intent was an equal swap of area. These two pieces together would equal what's coming out of fifteen, so fifteen wouldn't change. So, that's the, that's the proposal. What we submitted and what you all have seen, was discovered at four o'clock today that it doesn't need zoning. We mistakenly did not take out this area from the minimum lot size. So we were trying to make this three point one and, and we need to take out wetland, you know, to make the minimum buildable area three acres. And we missed this, so since that time at four o'clock, I hurriedly had to recalculate this. So what you're looking at, the orange line is what we submitted. The blue line is what we had to do at four o'clock today. Same intent, it's just we had to do that to make this work and I've added the, so the lot calculations.
Can I try to repeat it back and see if I understand this, that you, you basically, that new lot, you added the difference between the blue line and the orange line so that there was more non-wetlands there to, to meet the minimum acreage? Okay.
Which, which was to make up for the building sub that area.
If I get the big picture, which I might be missing, um, two neighbors, and, and if you swap some land, you can squeeze a, a third lot out of it, that's buildable.
Right, that's, yeah.
Right.
Pretty normal.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this has.
You don't want, you don't want thirty-five units, yeah, all right.
So, yeah, and then, so this is the existing driveway, uh, to lot fifteen. And that'll stay with an easement to get to it. It'll be a common easement, the building area will be up here for this lot. So we have yet to dig the test bit and yet go to state subdivision, so we haven't done that yet, but.
Is there a house on fourteen?
Yeah, it's over, it's off, it's probably off the map, it's up here. Both are developed.
Fourteen is seventeen and a half acres is the starting point.
Right, fourteen is twenty right now.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking, new, sorry, it would become seventeen and a half.
Yeah. It'll end up at seventeen. And what I explained about what we missed doesn't affect the two adjustments or lot fourteen, it's just the, the resulting lot fifteen is slightly smaller than the.
And that driveway easement looks like it cuts straight across the middle of the new lot. Does that make it so that the potential residents is like, kind of weird, like, you know, someone's driving by your house all the time?
It's a common driveway, yeah, I mean, it's just.
Oh, it's a common driveway.
Yeah, so they take it to wherever their driveway to their house comes off.
And Josh, what you can't tell is the, there's a lower level.
Oh, 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 right, there's, there's.
Significant, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so there's a top, so this is a flat spot to build in, so, yeah, it would be common driveway and utility easement.
Oh, so the new residents would be right next to the driveway, which makes sense.
It's significant, the driveway's like this and it's way above, so you can't even see it.
What's the total acreage, does it show that? Um, maybe I'm discussing, what's the, for that, just what's in blue, so that new lot that's being created, what's the proposed acreage? Here it is.
Yep, um.
Oh, that's, that's this one, oh, I see, there's a line, three point one one six acres. So you end up with like seventeen acres, fifteen acres and the three acre lot.
Yeah, and that meets the minimum lot size.
Or.
For whatever help it might be, these are.
Oh, cool.
Eleven by seventeens of what.
That is very helpful.
I'm sorry, I did.
No, no problem.
We had to make this change, but.
Can I suggest you check the ordinance requirement on easement width?
Okay. What was?
Um, in the reg, in the regs, it's in the regs, I don't.
I'm sorry, Sam.
Who owns which form? That's not relevant, I realize. Other than these are creating odd sized, odd shaped lots, I don't have any objection to it, although they're already odd shaped, so no getting around that.
So the new, the new lot, to your question, all right. Will end up being three point four, three point three eight.
Okay, oh, I see, three point one is the old one, so now it's going to be three point four.
Yeah, I left that on there, just to illustrate my change, so you see what I submitted and what I changed to?
And then, because it's under five, you're, you go to state subdivision approval to make sure you can fit septic for the, the new lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the easement, easement will have bearings and distances on it, um, aren't on yet, but.
There is something that's bugging me. I know it's like the worst time to say this, but. Is, is there a benefit, like basically what we're doing is changing our lot so that it's this now and his lot so that it's this now. Do we have to even worry about having a house lot because when we subdivide, we may change that lot anyway?
I don't understand the question, I guess.
See, what, so, so we may, when we decide whether we're going to build on it or sell it, we don't know. We might include something back here as part of it and like, we don't know what, how we're gonna re.
As long as it meets the minimum lot size.
Right, so if we don't know how we're going to redo it anyway, is there a benefit to having it be like having to go through all this rigmarole rather than just saying we're doing an adjustment of it?
So, the difference is you'd have to come in twice, so if you, if you do both now, which is the proposal, you leave, there's a subdivided lot, you record this, some future owner comes in, if you adjusted a lot line adjustment, someone else has to come back and do a, a subdivision in the future.
So either way, we end up back here.
Is, if, yeah, to get, to get a new lot, there has to be that subdivision approval.
You leave us that much, right? Unless you want to pay taxes on it.
I was going to say, right, right, unless we kept it as it is, when we, if we decided to sell it or lot, or sell the other one or whatever, unless we kept it as, if we didn't keep it as it is, we'd have to come, but if we do keep it as it is, we would.
I s, I don't understand the question, if you get a subdivision and you create a new lot, the person who chooses to build a house doesn't come back for planning board review, they, they get a building permit, you, you go through those other applications. If you.
I'm so sorry, I'm not, but will you have a court to vote if I leave? Sorry, I'm your mom.
Uh, we won't, wait, um, four.
You will have four people in.
We will have four, yes. Oh no, Rich is still there.
Rich is there?
Rich is still there.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
No, no problem. I am trying to be cognizant, because, well.
You have nothing to apologize for, that service you're doing.
You have someone here, I'm conscious, hey, and it's a long meeting, so, um, I.
So the only benefit is not having to do this twice, which we might have to anyway.
If you're going to increase that lot.
If we're going to change that lot in any way, yes.
So are you good proceeding with the lot line and subdivision? It's the most important question that I have, because if yes, we, we can.
I know, I shouldn't.
Look at and have an answer on that, if, if you are not or want time to think about it, like we can continue the application, you can come back. But if, if you're good with this proposal, we can.
Or if you want, just do the lot line tonight and do the subdivision some other day, at least.
Well, and with neighbors, I worry that they maybe wouldn't necessarily. Yeah, so, we're, we're, we as a board are good to hear the application, you just gotta commit, right?
You don't have long.
And, and this is much simpler than the other one, because we're just looking at, at lot, lot sizes and making sure that there's access to three lots and that you need the lot dimensions and area.
Yeah, and I, and I'm thinking of it more as two lots. But.
If you're proven you're not binding one into.
I mean, they can, they could.
They don't have to do anything.
Don't do anything.
Well, if they don't, as long as they don't record anything, but you can.
Right.
I mean, as we walk out of this room, there's nothing written in stone that.
So you'd still have to come back with them.
You just have the approval to do this if you want to do it.
Good, good enough for me, I, I'm looking at white rural, so it's three acres. As I said, they got it up to three point four, so you've got that front area and, well excluded, so that meets the acreage requirement. You had a building envelope that I saw and then the other ones have existing, so you've got that building envelope.
Yeah.
What, is it a?
That's it.
Yeah, side.
I see. And that's, where am I, rural, two fifty by three hundred, and that's two fifty by three hundred shown there, and that's the triangle that they're adding. So, I don't see an issue with this and obviously they have to get that state approval to make sure the septic works for the proposed lot.
Right, uh, so if we are going, we should check that, uh, hey, Rich, do you remember the right of way width requirement? Fifty, I think.
Fifty feet.
So I think you have thirty on there, right?
Yeah, okay. Access and utility easement. Access and utility easement. Where's that? Yeah, where's the requirement for 50?
Where is it, Rich? I think it's in the regs, right?
It's in the L D R, um, ones that we did this summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's my big thing of them?
Yeah, you're gonna have to make that right of way 10 feet wide on each side.
Let's make sure we can point out the right requirements or, so. Subdivision specifications, submission requirements, well, what, is that under section six?
Rich, can you help, uh, do you, can you point me to the section that's in?
No.
Sorry, I don't have my stuff with me, sorry.
Let me see if I can find it in six. Access, major, it's minor subdivision. Underlying. Road improvements, so that doesn't have a.
No, I think it's gonna be in one of the minor things, either a minor or one of the other lot line adjustments, or, or it's gonna be in one of those other
Oh, maybe 8.6 streets. Cause I, I looked at minor subdivision, I didn't see it. There's 50 foot staked intervals before any clearing for the right of way in.
Given the topography, is the 50 foot right of way a problem?
I mean, and in theory it could be.
Well, I mean, the road, the driveway is already there, I mean.
Oh, right, 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 so.
Right.
So, I, I think whoever made this 30 feet made it what they thought they needed, you know, based on the driveway being.
Originally I had that at 50 and me and Tim talked that it would benefit the person putting the house on that flat area up top if it wasn't so wide.
Oh, yeah, there's a 20 foot.
Well, assuming the road didn't, or at least the right of way doesn't have to be necessarily the.
The right of way already exists, right?
But that's, that's why I'm questioning what.
It's just the driveway does, yes.
But, but I mean, this, this house over here is driving across the.
Well, I own it all right now, right, I own it all right now.
Yeah, the, I mean, so the question for us is, is this, is this a requirement, and this is why I'm having trouble finding, is this a requirement for constructing a street as opposed to where there is like an existing driveway, private road?
Well, if it's in the regs, they can ask to waive it, we can vote to waive it, cause it's already installed.
And I just, I made it smaller so it would benefit somebody putting a house up there.
So it was 50 feet before?
I had it, when Tim first did it, I had it set at 50 feet, and then I told him he could bring it down just because it wouldn't be eating on the person putting the house up top there, and that whole top flat area is like a field.
Like a football field.
I guess, hmm, my promise is, I just wanna be able to put eyes on where the, the requirement we're talking about, 50 foot.
I, I think it's something you're gonna have to search in the.
Yeah.
I'd be screaming at this point.
You're trying to search it? Search the document.
That would be helpful.
Look for right of way.
Yeah, look for the word 50.
Oh, yeah, there's.
That might be, might be digits.
Oh, wait, wait, every highway right of way shall be at least. Oh, it's not that.
Is it a modern street?
Nope, no, this isn't a street.
Right, so this is not like a dedicated, an accepted street or highway, okay, so I, I tend to think it's, it's fine if that's the requirement that we're looking at.
Shell's got something that you might have it.
8.2, it's embarrassing, I was there. Yeah, it, so I think that's, in my mind at least, that's when we're telling them, you are, you are improving the, you are creating a new. Okay.
See, because it is a shared driveway, it's different than if it's just a driveway.
It's a shared driveway of two, so let me put this way, it's, it's not a zoning ordinance requirement, it is in the regs. Does anyone of the five of us have any concerns with the 30 foot driveway servicing two lots, the existing one and the proposed new lot?
No.
Rich?
No.
Okay. So.
I suggest you ask us to waive it, the 50 foot.
Can you, can you link that up 50 foot?
Um, well, there was one, it, it, to the extent it's there, it's on streets, so it's not in the starting, it's at the very least, so we had, we, we just talked, um, frontage is good, lot size is good, you're gonna go get the, so, so I'm inclined to say we can approve it now. And obviously the condition is that they would need to ultimately obtain that approval from the state for, uh, septic.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, and then driveway permit.
Well, it's already.
Well, it's already.
It's an existing driveway.
Is that, cause Intervale's.
No, there is no new driveway.
Well, it's, it's an expanded, expanded use of an existing, but either way, we say all applicable and, and move on.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright.
Good, can I, can I get a motion to approve subject to obtaining all applicable local and state permits?
So moved, seconded.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, and, and just to be clear on that motion, it is the as changed with the, the plan that you submitted tonight, if that changed.
With the blue line.
Right. Thank you for waiting.
Whole lot easier than otherwise, huh?
Go home.
Um, where is the agenda under this stack of thousands of papers, oh, here, thanks. Okay, so, actually, I do have one new piece of business, and this is, maybe a little frustrating that I haven't gotten to it, but, um, I don't think we can get, we can finish this tonight, I will send, or someone, I'll, I'll, maybe I'll ask Cal to do it. Ken notified me that there is a new bill that was signed into law about ADUs, and it may be applicable to the fight field, uh, conditional use permit for an ADU that we saw, correct? I had an initial concern where I think, as I understood that bill, it was, you can't require greater things than you can for a normal residential house, but it doesn't mean that we don't have a CUP in place, it just means that we can't require like greater setbacks or greater parking or those kind of things. So the, what I'd like you, and we can circulate this for the rest of the board for the next one, is think about is our CUP application or requirement just totally preempted, or does it still exist and fit within that lot? We just can't require more than for a single family house, so we'll circulate that to the board, take a look at it, take a look at the statute, and then in two weeks, I think they'll be back, and, and maybe at the start of the application.
And this is for the proposal to the Shaker and Baptist?
No, this, well, this is the ADU.
At Shaker and Baptist, okay.
Yes, yeah, yep, and so at the start, when we continue, we'll have to have that conversation of.
It's Steve Fife Fields, Shaker and Baptist is, for, for, yeah, Steve Fife Fields is up closer to Lambs.
Okay. So, um, sorry, no, no problem, so Cal, would it be possible for you to send, sort of, and it can just be, I think you can forward Ken's initial email, maybe not my response, so there's not really a discussion among us, but Ken's initial concern, and just maybe in the subject say, the, the question for the board when we start is to what extent our ordinance has been preempted? And is a CUP permit still required?
So I know it's after 10 o'clock, but here's a potential issue, is what if the fight fields show up to our boarding at Sam Lake asking for a permit? What are we gonna tell them?
I, I, you know, it's, it's only a two week difference, we tell them they have to come back, they have a pending application. Right now we have an ordinance, so until the planning board, I think, says this doesn't apply, um, it's not uncommon sometimes to say, you can say building permits, you need to go to the planning board, you go to the planning board, the planning board says, no, you don't need to come to us, it's been preempted, so I would hope that a two weeks wait isn't gonna be that them gonna, you know, start an appeal, they'll, they'll wait the two weeks.
I guess that's up to them.
Yeah.
Well, if they really insist on tomorrow, that'd be a problem, but hopefully it'll be more than that now.
So that's the, that's when we would have had it anyway, and that's when we can sort of have a, I think that's an appropriate board decision, not a single person decision, so.
But if it's pre, if it's preempted Brendan, wouldn't just a letter suffice?
I'm not even there for.
If, if, if that requirement sort of preempts our ordinance, what ends up happening is they just go get a building permit, so that's sort of what Ken is saying.
Right, so, so instead of them, I mean, it, it seems like it would be more immediate if a letter was sent to them saying that the technicalities have been preempted, so you don't need to come back in and you can go ahead and do what you wanna do now.
Right, but what I'm saying is, I think the board should look at that statute, cause I don't think that's exactly what that statute says, it sort of talks about how much, how little, and it changes some of the room requirements, and either way.
I misunderstood.
Yeah, so we can.
I misunderstood you.
In two weeks, we can all take a look and I'll have more time to really sit down and read it, and then we can say at the start, take a vote, we either do or don't think you still need a CUP, if they do, we move forward, if we don't, then they're good. Okay.
The woman that was sitting in the chair right in front of me.
Oh, Lucy Ann Zeller, that's her purse, oh, sorry.
The night of collected phones and purses, yeah.
Oh, I think I have her phone number.
Okay.
She might need to make a motion to adjourn.
I would love that.
I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you, Rich as well, for staying through.